Recording in progress.
Can I get a paper cut? You have the agenda. My notes cannot be opened.
Oh, you.
Yeah. Can you have two more? So far, my computer is not working and my microphone is not working. So great start to the meeting. Good to see you all.
It's working. It's just that.
They just can't hear me back.
All right. I said so far my computer's not working and my microphone's not working. So great start to the meeting, but great to have you all here in person. I know you're all concerned with a number of issues tonight. So pleased to have such an active audience today. So welcome to our city council meeting for Monday, March eighteenth. I will just be trying to get my notes back open as we're getting started. So just a couple of notes before we do start. A reminder that we continue to have people attending virtually. So I do toggle back and forth between my Zoom screen and here in person in case any staff or members of the public are presenting for a public hearing. And we do take breaks every ninety to one hundred and twenty minutes between items as we need to. So we begin every meeting with an open comment period, and this is an opportunity for anyone from the public would like to speak on an item that we are not taking public testimony later on in the agenda. And if we could have the rules pulled up because I don't have them in front of me. So we allow for twenty minutes total with two minutes per person. And just a note that those your comments should be delivered to me as the presiding officer over the meeting. We encourage, of course, feedback to the city, but we ask that you deliver it respectfully. People who spoke at the earlier meeting this month will not be able to speak tonight. But just a couple of other thoughts, and again, I'm going off my memory here. So if you have written materials, please hand them to our city clerk and she will make sure that we all receive those items. We do not respond in real time to your comments, but if there are items that you'd like follow up for, we ask that you make sure that the city clerk has your contact information and either council or staff will get back to you. What am I missing? I think I got it all. So I will go in the order of those signed up. I have a sheet right in front of me. And call you up when you are called up. Please introduce yourself and I will be using these different methods of keeping track of time. The stoplight here turns yellow at thirty seconds remaining and there's a clock on the wall. So I will invite Dan Fifeield up to speak first. And please introduce yourself and you have two minutes.
Good evening, Mayor Norton. Council President Carlson, city council members. My name is Dan Fifeill. I'm the co-founder and president of the Landing MN. You can only imagine why I'm here. Tonight's the second reading of ordinance that's going to ban camping in the city of Rochester. My stance has not changed. I don't think this is an appropriate ordinance to pass forward. I think that it is going to cause more problems than it's worth for our folks that are experiencing homelessness and are forced to camp or make that election to camp. I think it needs to be reconsidered. I think we need to have a pause and I think we need to look at the verbiage that's within the ordinance itself. Stating things such as reasonable person. Well, if you're homeless, sometimes being reasonable is very hard to be. It's not like anybody sitting up here, anybody in this audience right now. Being reasonable is not something that's in their vocabulary or in their game plan. They want to survive. What I ask is a pause. Let's sit down as a group and talk through this because we've not done that. It's been decisions made by people that aren't experiencing lived experience. I think it needs to be looked at stronger. You'll be in a group this coming Wednesday with the county talking about plans to move forward as a community to help work on and possibly solve homelessness. I encourage you to reconsider your vote tonight. Let that committee, that group work on what they're diligently working on. And let us move forward with those plans. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Fifeield. Corey Jacob. Now, please introduce yourself. You have three minutes.
My name's Corey Jacob regarding camping ordinance. Since I've voted twice on this ordinance, I now want to point out some facts I have neglected to share prior. My primary disability is actually caused by local government that I have got my SSDI for and is directly responsible for my being homeless. In my account to get information to members of the city council, Sean Palmer had directly put a target on my head regarding this ordinance being forced against me on me when I am not the one causing the problem. And essentially, I don't see a solution because I'm taking into account my SSDI, which is worth three hundred and four thousand dollars over twenty years that I risk losing. If this law ordinance is enforced against me, I can't risk it. Which is forcing me into a situation that putting me in a life threatening decision making on my part trying to comply with an ordinance I can't comply with. I don't have a way to do it and there's too many ways that the system will force the full maximum effect of this ordinance on us to be enforced beyond what the scope of what law enforcement claims they want to use ordinance as. Because they will be considered failure to perform their duties by failing to uphold this ordinance to its maximum. And they will lose their jobs and be replaced with an officer who will uphold this ordinance to its max. I've already dealt with consequences in Lake City over this very issue, which nearly forced me to be exposed to excessive force by the Lake City law enforcement when I was trying to uphold my rights to sleep. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jacob. Chris Allen.
Thank you so much for having me today. I'm a graduate of Lord's High School. I'd like to read just a little bit. We are taking public testimony for Lord's under item G six. So wait.
Yep.
Okay, we'll do. But I will also say I'm interested in making sure the pool at Silver Lake gets saved. I live in that area. And I think we should actually have three pools in Rochester, one in the northwest section of town where I live too. So thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh, let's see. John Swanson.
Good evening. My name is John Swanson. And I'm a forty year member of the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, and I just wanted to talk about the importance of continuing to build union in Rochester. It's always been a strong union town. And it's provided me and my friends, my family with a livelihood which we couldn't have gotten in any other way, I think. By having a strong by having a strong union support network behind us. So I'd like to see Rochester continue to stay that way and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Casey McGregor.
Hello, Casey McGregor, council mayor. Tonight's agenda is overpacked as some of these agendas get. Why voters should never vote for referendums. The questions are written. Sorry. The questions that are written in referendums seem to always have a second agenda that is not told to the voter or the public. Example, the school is pushing a referendum renewal through on the agenda tomorrow night for one hundred and seventy million for ten years. Who was properly informed of this? The government officials in charge of these referendums hire lawyers to write questions to prey upon you emotionally to want to say yes. On tonight's agenda, there are problems with F six, F eight, F eighteen, F nineteen, and F twenty. Since I'm limited on time because you guys voted against us. I am only going to talk on F twenty. But I hope there'll be robust discussion on the rest of them. F twenty wants to take away the public pool and change it to a splash pad. We have two pools in the city. We do not have enough swimming excess. We do not have enough swimming lessons available. Teaching children how to swim is one of the most important things to teach, especially when you live in a state that is known for its ten thousand lakes. To deny children this opportunity is reprehensible. Growing up as poor as I did, one of the things my parents was able to do was scrape together enough money for a pool pass, and that's where we spent our summers. A splash pad. At a certain age, you age out of it. As an adult, I can still go to a pool and enjoy a pool. You take so much away from the community and lack of pool access.
Last thought, Ms. McGregor.
I'd really like you to reimagine the sixty five million dollar sports complex money and into more pools. And I one last thought. I really think you need to do the dam and the pool together is in tandem. Because if you take away this water feature and that one doesn't pass, then you've lost all water features in the neighborhood.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Joe Christensen.
Good evening. I'm Joe Christensen. I understand the Army Corps of Engineers kind of dictates or says that we should dredge the Silver Lake. Understand, I think that's absolutely feasible. I'm concerned about the pedestrian bridge, which I've seen kind of budget around two point one nine million. The dam modification of four point seven million and the North Pedestrian Trail. I also see concept drawings of five ponds. And I'm not sure if that's supposed to be below the dam or above the dam. If it's oriented north, it looks like it's actually where Silver Lake is right now. That's why I oppose that. As far as the camping ordinance, I support it. But I also think there should be options for people who maybe they don't want to go to the shelter. Maybe there should be some type of a camping facility or a place where they can go if they can't get into the landing or the Dorothy Day House or any other features. Thank you.
Thank you. Matthew and Esther Block.
Hello, we are Matthew and Esther Block, seventeen eighty four Spruce Meadows Drive, southeast. We're here to discuss the intersection at the parent drop off at the entrance to Longfellow Elementary School that intersects with Twentieth Street Southeast. This intersection is unsafe. The two exit lanes make for blind spots where drivers and pedestrians cannot see each other and cars do not respect the stop sign. Esther, would you like to describe how you cross this street?
First, I stop at the crosswalk before the crosswalk and get off my bike. Then I look over my shoulder. Then when it's safe, I walk to the next lane. After that, I go peek around the car waiting just a tiny bit like a mouse. If it's safe, then I go. Sometimes cars honk at me and tell me to cross. It's hard to ignore them because they're mad at me. But I don't go until it's safe. One time a car stopped and the driver waved me to cross. I shook my head and stayed on the sidewalk. Then a car turned right where I would have been if I had followed his directions. The driver who had told me to walk looked like he was sorry. Another time I peeked and it was safe, so I took half a step, but then I had to jump back because there was a car coming that I did not see. He stopped in front of the crosswalk, rolled down his window, stuck out his head and said, are you okay? And then I said, yes. And he drove away. Then I peeked again and went across the street.
We appreciate that there's a plan to add a speed hump to encourage a full and complete stop at the stop sign before the crosswalk. Respectfully, we would say that having only one traffic lane rather than two exiting the property is also necessary. The right turn lane from the school onto Twentieth Street Southeast can easily be disabled with signage or with sandbags or concrete barriers. There shouldn't even be a shoulder for cars to sneak on that side. In the future, a sidewalk on the west side would also be a welcome addition. Thank you.
Thank you. And my understanding is staff are working with the school district on this issue. So thank you. All right, Barb Hudson.
Hello, Barb Hudson, Rochester, Minnesota. I just want to talk about your F twenty, your redesign of Silver Lake and the dam. I understand that you want to remove the dam and I'm just concerned, as many citizens are, that removing the dam that actually produces Silver Lake is going to have a negative impact on the community and the dam. It's going to change the footprint of Silver Lake, which really is an icon for Rochester. And I want to make sure that you are sure in your in your mind that it is not going to change the footprint of this iconic park and Silver Lake. I just asked that you look on the other side of the dam and the river and notice that there is not much water on the other side of the dam. You can actually walk across the water. It's about the ankle deep on Thompson Mill Race Park. That is a river. Silver Lake is not a river. There's not really a river that goes through there. It was historically a swampland. And now with climate change, there's not a lot of water that's going through there only in heavy rain situations, which we're not seeing anymore. We're warming the climate. There's not as much rain anymore. So I'm very concerned that it's going to change the footprint of Silver Lake. So please strongly consider that. I understand too, that if you want any more clear proof of that, look at what happened to Lake Shady when they removed the dam in Orinoco. It's now dry land. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hudson. Quick point of clarification, F twenty does not include the dam. Thanks. All right, that is it for my list. Was there anybody else who wanted to speak? We have just a couple of minutes left. Mr. Lund. I don't see you, Mr. Lund.
I thought I had to submit online, but anyway, my name is Alan. And I'm commenting on intercultural city Rochester initiative. In a September twenty first, twenty twenty city council meeting, the council voted six to one to approve the welcoming week and intercultural cities initiative resolutions. Among the resolution passed by the city council is the following. Be further resolved that the city of Rochester teammates are asked to develop a comprehensive and community co-design intercultural action plan using information and opportunities identified in ICC index report. As a concerned citizen, creator of the website Community Beam and facilitator of Community Mobilization Resource Coalition, CMRC, I'm aware that since twenty twenty, there have been many DEI activities that may advance the city's standing as a member of the Council of Europe's Intercultural Cities Movement. And we should be proud of these efforts and take explicit credit for these efforts. In the twenty twenty indexing report, our city did not benchmark well in the media, i.e. public communication metric of the index. To correct that poor measurement, the city of Rochester team membership is strategic in communicating its intercultural action plan and to consider leading another ICC indexing effort similar to those undertaken between June twenty eighteen and September twenty twenty. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Lund. Right. Wes Lund, I do have you on the other list, so I just shifted you over. Yep, I see you.
I have a document that I want to give to your clerk Heidi. But you should be familiar with it because it's your own document. It is the that's the request for an action plan regarding designating Silver Lake as an historic landmark and directing the city attorney, Michael Spindler Craig, to prepare an ordinance for first reading. So the narrative is clear and that document is dated June twenty sixth, twenty twenty three. So we're not talking about ancient history here. It's in the recent past. And our city has already paid consultants thousands upon thousands upon thousands of dollars to research the impact that Silver Lake has upon the community as a historical site. A couple of these documents I have with me here tonight. One is the Silver Lake document that bears the new logo of Rochester. This isn't ancient history as well. It's not something Herodotus wrote. It's actually a document that shows the bridges of Silver Lake are unique and add to the flavor of an historical park. The buildings are unique and add to the flavor of Silver Lake as an historical park. The walkways are precious. The geese used to be precious before their eggs were oiled and then replaced with ceramic eggs the next year to trick the mothers into nesting there again because that was considered to be less cruel to the poor mothers of the Goslings. The historical flavor of Silver Lake is very deep in Rochester's past and we've already paid thousands of dollars to have the research done that I'm going to give to Heidi here tonight as well. It's your own documents that I'm handing back to you. You are representatives in this town. Please direct city staff to stop communicating with Representative Smith, Andy Smith, who has introduced a bonding bill in the state legislature to put us millions of dollars in debt.
Thank you, Mr. Lund.
Thank you for your indulgence. I went over time. Pardon me.
That's all right.
I think it was important though.
Thanks. All right. Well, that completes our open comment period and I will ask clerk Kelly Geisler to officially call the meeting to order. And
Councilmember. Here. Councilmember Bransford.
Here.
Councilmember Wall.
Here.
Councilmember Kirkpatrick.
Here.
Councilmember Palmer. Councilmember Dennis.
Here.
Council President Carlson.
Here.
Mayor Norton.
Present. All right, I will turn it over to our city administrator Allison Zels for her report.
Thank you, Council President, Councilmembers, Mayor Norton, members of the public, many members of the public. We always start off the report by thanking our teammates for acting with respect, integrity, safety, and excellence in mind. So thanks to all of our teammates for always having those at the top of their mind as they're going about their work. Also just have a couple of things to highlight. We will have the first in a series of opportunities for residents and business owners to come out and talk about Sixth Street Bridge, the Sixth Street improvements related to the bridge and riverfront improvements. That will be on March twenty sixth from four thirty to six thirty, open house style at four hundred Broadway Avenue South. You can find more information about that on our website under News and Announcements, RochesterMN.gov. We do expect construction on that to begin as early as twenty twenty six as we move forward with the final design on that. Also wanted to acknowledge a free family day that's coming up, two free family days for our partners over at the Rochester Art Center across the street, Thirty Civic Center Drive Southeast from eleven AM to four PM on March twenty fourth and April twenty eighth, they will have free family days for folks. Also just wanted to point out that we also have another opportunity at Dinosaur Discovery at Rochester Public Library on Wednesday, March twentieth at six thirty to seven thirty PM focused on families and youth from six to twelve years old. There will be a visit from Penelope Rex. So for folks that are interested in those books, please consider coming out to the library. And then just also wanted to point out that there are some seats expiring for their term limits on the ethical practices board. For those seats that expire on April thirtieth, twenty twenty four, we're currently accepting applications. Applications will be accepted through the end of business on March twenty ninth, twenty twenty four. So you can head over to RochesterMN.gov, click on Government and then Boards and Commissions, and that's the way that you apply. Or I know that Mashan in the mayor's office is always willing to take calls or folks over in legal. So that's all I have today.
Thank you, Ms. Elms. Mayor Norton.
I have a few things to share as well. One of them was today is the March for Meals Month. I did a proclamation over across town where they load up the meals that are taken by volunteers to over three hundred seniors in this community who rely on those meals. The volunteers really deserve our recognition and that's part of what I ask in the proclamation is that we all take some time to really appreciate and thank them. The the physical contact as well as the food, it ends hunger and it really combats isolation that so many of our seniors experience. A wonderful program. And this was the twenty second annual March for Meals month, and I think some of you are going to be delivering meals and other folks in the community this, I think throughout the rest of the week. So thank you all for doing that. Also just wanted to mention that it's National Transit Employee Appreciation Day. And I think it is never a bad idea to honor our transit employees who do such a great job getting people to work. So just wanted to mention that and thank them for their work on behalf of getting folks to their jobs and shopping and anywhere they need to go in this community. So thank you. So I put this up, but I'm going to mention a couple of things. So residents are able to contact the mayor's office to have something meaningful in their lives that's a national recognition recognized. And we were contacted by some folks in town who wanted us to honor Kidney Cancer Awareness Month, which we did on March fourth, illuminating the dome lights orange. So whether you want a proclamation or you want the city hall lights, which can be changed into multiple colors, done, there's a place on the website that tells you how to do that. And I encourage you to take advantage of that if there's something you want to recognize. On March seventh, we recognized Colorectal Cancer Month and I had an opportunity to go over to Hope Lodge, which was, it's an annual event, but very meaningful. And it's wonderful to be able to talk to the residents that are there getting treatment here at Mayo Clinic and how much they love our city and also appreciate the recognition. Couple other things that have happened just recently. I'm just going to give a quick list. We had art in our city, poet laureate organized an event this past week. It was standing room only over at Chateau Theater. That was fabulous. I got to listen to half a dozen of the poems, which were excellent by area residents and even some from the surrounding community. Dancing for the Arts took place this past weekend, raising funds for arts programs for our students in the city and area. Another really important opportunity. We had a geothermal symposium in town. Some of you attended it. Some of you spoke at it. It was the first ever of its kind to study alternative types of heating and cooling and energy and geothermal is what we have installed here at City Hall and we're growing that district. It was pretty exciting. There was a panel on homelessness this past week at Glory Day Church, which I took part in. It was excellent and there were wonderful questions from the audience and I think we all came away with a greater understanding of each other's concerns and actions that we're taking here. It went really well. Also want to mention Rochester Visioning twenty fifty, RV twenty fifty, we're calling it. We had our consultant in town who met with city council members, administration, and some members of the community on ways we can get feedback from all of you and people in our community about what they want Rochester to look like. And we've got a lot of growth and change going on, but what do you want to see in this community between now and twenty fifty? And so there'll be a process that'll be happening over the next year. And we got a great start this past week. And lastly, I went to Washington DC a week ago to the White House challenge on fighting health, hunger, and nutrition, trying to end childhood hunger in particular, but hunger across the country. And I want to just call out the Food Forest Initiative that happened this weekend. One of our city council members, Councilmember Kirkpatrick worked on that and it was actually creating a food forest here in Rochester so people can I think it'll be growing as I understand it over the coming year, but we trimmed apple trees that were planted a number of years ago that had kind of been left untended. But addressing hunger and food deserts around our community, this is one way to do it. So thought I would mention those as well. We do have some brochures out in the hallway. If you're interested in visiting our sister city of Moosburg, several mayors in the past have taken a delegation to Moosburg, Germany, and will be going September twentieth through twenty ninth. And we will also be stopping in Munster. We'll be going to, I think, four cities. And Munster is our sister city for And Munster is our sister city for energy and we've been working with them for six or seven years now on exchanges and they'll be coming here soon. Boards and commissions, the ethical practices was mentioned by our administrator. We also have an opening on Ward Three in the music board that I'll be doing phone calls or teams meetings with. So if you have an interest in music, that's an opportunity. And as well as we just had an announcement that one of our Police Policy Oversight Commission members has, is moving on April 12th. And so I'll be needing to fill that vacancy quite soon. So if you have an interest in that, again, the city's website has a board and commission place to pull down the tab and you can sign it for that. It's a very easy application process and we just ask you to hook on a resume to it. If you don't have a resume, you can just type on a little sheet of paper, a little bit about yourself. That's all we ask. And lastly, I did attend the National League of Cities Conference while I was out in Washington DC. I'm on the National League of Cities Research Advisory Committee. So that was an excellent opportunity to talk about what do we want the National League of Cities to do for us? What issues do we want them to study? And that was a fascinating afternoon of conversation. I attended a half day on municipal finance, which was very enlightening. Attended and I'm saying a couple of these things because they were asked for by one of our city council people. I attended the Human Development Federal Abboty Committee Committee Meeting, a joint constituency constituency group meeting, attended federal office hours for many of our federal departments, spoke with our representatives and senators, attended women in government meeting and I think that's probably enough. The League of Minnesota Cities Reception. So those are a couple of the things I did while I was out there. I do have the booklet here if anyone is interested in seeing those workshop titles. And for our board here, our council, they can go online at the National League of Cities on their app and there are PowerPoint presentations and more information for you should you choose to look for them. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mayor. All right, moving on to proving the order of the agenda. I've not been informed of any recent changes.
Additional approval has presented.
All right, Councilmember Keen.
Nothing to add.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. All right, moving on to the consent agenda. Councilmember Dennis is pulling items F-17 through 19. Councilmember Wallace pulling item F-20. These items will be discussed under Reports and Recommendations. Anything that I missed? All right, I would invite a motion to approve items F-1 through 16 and block.
So moved.
Hey, Councilmember Keen, you have the floor.
Just one thing to just draw attention to, F-6 is a very big thing that we're doing, adding some city staff, but we went through it in very good detail in a working session back in the month of February. I want to call out staff again that we're doing this without impact to levy and trying to follow our principles of those who benefit from our spending are the ones who cover those costs and this is staying consistent with that and I appreciate that.
Agreed. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. All right, we have six public hearings tonight. So I always take a minute to go through the process we use. So we allow for staff to provide an introduction to the topic. Then we, if there is an applicant, invite the applicant or representative of the applicant to present for up to 10 minutes. We then open the public hearing. Members of the public who would like to comment have up to five minutes each with no cumulative time limit, although we do encourage you to be concise and same, same goes for our open comment at the beginning of the meeting. We then close the public hearing. The applicant has a chance to provide a rebuttal for up to five minutes before we move on to council questions of staff or the applicant and then motion discussion and vote. So several of our public hearings tonight have been continued from previous meetings. So it's a little clunky here, but I will do the best I can in explaining. So our first item is G1 and it is the final plat, CD 2024 001 plat, to be known as Hunter Valley Estates. And this has been continued from February and I believe we have Desmond McGeo here to introduce the item or reintroduce the item. And then I will reopen the public hearing. Everything okay?
Yes, I was just looking for my folder. So. So yes, this is Hunter Valley Estates. The applicant is proposing eight lots and five residential or five outlots for this 55 acre site, which is located at the southwest corner of 55th Street and 18th Avenue. As noted in the staff report, there are 15 conditions of approval. Did want to note that there are probably six that are standard conditions of approval. There are about three conditions that pertain to improvement plan requirements and future improvements of the site. A few of the conditions are just more or less a to monument certain activities. It's, I would call it, you know, a bridge to that connects the final plat to the approved development agreement because the lot numbers have changed between the two. So in total, there's probably, I think, 10 conditions of approval that are directed towards the applicant for and provide obligations to the applicant. And like I said, six of those are probably what we would consider to be typical conditions of approval of final plat. So staff is recommending approval of this application. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
All right, Mr. McGeo, we'll get back to you. But for now, I will invite up Bill Twain. There he is. I assume you are speaking on behalf of the applicant. All right. So you have up to 10 minutes.
Council President Carlson, members of the council, Mayor Norton. I am representing Hunter Valley Estates this evening. The applicant owner is not able to attend the meeting this night, tonight. So I'm the stand-in. Stand-up, stand-in, whatever you want to call it. The final plat mirrors the preliminary plat that had been previously approved. We had asked for an extension of time on March 5th to discuss the conditions with staff. And as Desmond has mentioned, there are many of these are just informational items that points out the difference between references in the development agreement and the final plat. Really, in summary, the applicant effectively requests your approval of the final plat based on staff recommendation. The compliance with the criteria for the final plat that's contained in your staff report and the 15 conditions that are stated on pages 335 and 336 of your packet. And with that, I would stand for any questions you may have or if they come up.
So we will get back to you after the public hearing. Thank you, Mr. Twain. Let me just take a quick look. I do not see anyone. Oh, yes, I do see one person signed up for item G1, Anna and Steve Amundson. So I will open the public hearing and invite you to speak.
G2.
Oh, okay. And same for Steve Khan?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, is there anyone who would like to speak on item G1? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing and invite my colleagues to ask any questions of Mr. Twain or staff. Councilmember Keen.
May I direct my question at staff? Just, this is an unusual one in that we have an approved general development plan from 2016 and now we're trying to do a a final plat. Can you talk about some of the complexities of that or that we've worked through them?
As far as the complexity of it, there were several things in the previous plat that we had to address in this final plat, like the misnaming of, or not misnaming, but just the different naming of the lots on this one in comparison to the development agreement. So that's why those three conditions, I think it's four, five, and six are locate, are part of the conditions of approval. It's essentially to allow somebody to look at this in the future and be able to figure out how the, how the two connect with one another. So in other areas, you know, we needed to make sure that it was compliant with the preliminary plat still. There was a new street that was added. It's a private street that was permitted or staff agreed to. And I would defer to any kind of like civil improvement plans and, and changes that may have occurred to the Public Works Department. But from, from a community development standpoint, it was pretty straightforward.
Okay, thank you. And I'd like to ask the development rep the similar question. With this idea of we have an old general development plan moving into a new, is there anything in here that you're worried about as we go forward?
Councilmember Keen, members of the council, I'm Bill Twain again. No, we are, we, we have an amended development agreement and we had a reinstated preliminary plat and general development plan both. So we are, we are anxious to get started and we have people asking for lots, both residential and commercial. So.
Okay. In some of my research, I understand there's older maps and newer maps. Do you feel that's all been resolved?
Yes, I do. We have, as noted in your conditions, four, five, six, and seven. We have reinstated the lot numbers so that they're consistent with the actual plat. So.
Okay.
We're good at that.
Right, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Wall, did you have a question for Mr. Twain?
I do.
And Mr. Twain, would you speak a little bit closer to the microphone? You're a little quiet. Thank you.
Just for the record, is the owner agreeable to all the 15 conditions?
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
All right, motion?
I'll make a motion to.
Oh, Councilmember Palmer.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead, go ahead.
Oh, I just, sorry.
One second.
Sorry, Council President Carlson, I just want to make one clarification just to have it on the record from what Desmond shared. The the street that he was referred to that, that was added, that's actually a private driveway and that's an important distinction. So I just wanted to make sure that was on the record. That the added access was a private driveway, not a public street or a private street.
All right, Mr. Spindler Craig.
Madam President, if I may, before, there is a motion and sorry to ask you to get up again, Mr. Twain, that just a couple of additional questions. Piggybacking on what you've already been asked. Mr. Twain, over the last number of weeks, if not months, you've had a full opportunity to talk through these various conditions with the city staff?
Yes, we have.
And you feel like you have a full understanding of all of the conditions as detailed as they are as they've been presented to you? Any confusion or remaining questions about those conditions?
Everything was clarified on the March 5th virtual meeting with the city staff. So we understand the conditions.
Okay, good to hear. And do you have any questions or any clarifications that you need to make yet about these conditions that you on behalf of of the developer here, Mr. Bay, are agreeing to publicly before, before this body? Any remaining questions or clarifications?
No, we do not.
And you're fully committed to carrying forward and abiding by these conditions? We're going to do our best together to avoid any discrepancies or disputes about the meaning of these conditions down the road?
That's correct. Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Thanks for coming back up. All right, Mr. Palmer.
President Carlson, a point of clarification. I'm sorry, jumping in here. So this is new to me, having a city staff question is with, when it comes to parliamentary procedure, Robert's rules, is this followed under this? Can I maybe the clerk?
Council rules state that our city clerk, our city administrator, and our city attorney may jump in at any point in the meeting without a point of order. So it is appropriate.
It doesn't happen often at all. So.
But it is explicitly stated in the rules. All right.
All right, there's been problems in the past. So thank you.
I'll just make a motion to approve with the 15 conditions.
Second.
All right, Councilmember Palmer, you have the floor.
I'm looking forward to this subdivision being put in. Thank you.
Councilmember Keen.
Yeah, again, you tell from some of my questions, this one does bother me and it's not. There's a combination here of our process, but also the specific thing here. We've spent extensive amount of times over the last couple of years trying to get a UDC in place and trying to get a tight process so that we have these things come to us much cleaner. And tonight, I don't see that. There are conditions here that are more but more than just the conditions, there are these other things about, are there still some discrepancies with the maps? Sometimes when you have things like conditions that reference tentative plans with RPU or references to discrepancies, those are the kind of things that lead to disagreements in the future or that lead towards, you know, something where we'll end up with different readings of what we, what we agreed to tonight. And that's what I'm trying to, trying to get away for. I do come here tonight and I was listening for a public hearing and I'm prepared to support this final plat, but I do want to kind of address this to community development that I don't, I don't want this to go on. I want us, we did, we went, spent some time to have a hardcore process. So let's follow our process and when we come here if we don't have this sort of like, like murky looking thing that we're not sure we are in agreement, even though we all say we are. We spent some time to do the process right. Now, that, that's the technical team here, but I want to look at the management team too. And if we're pushing people to get things done because we got to get agreements in place, cut it out. We need, we have this process. We spent three years putting it in place and the first time I see something, it looks like incentive development. It looks like the thing we're going back to and I don't want that. I want us to stay true to what we, we prepared and approved. And if it's wrong, come to us and tell us it's wrong. Don't work around it. Thank you.
I am very excited to see the development moving forward after all this time and all this back and forth between parties. So thank you for the work you did to make it, get to where it is today. And thank you for making sure everything is very clear and articulated and there is an agreement to make this happen. Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. All right, we are moving on to items G2 and G3. These, this both of these items were continued from an earlier meeting and we will be taking the public hearing together for these items, but I will ask my colleagues to do two separate motions on the two separate items. So I'll ask staff to introduce both of the items at once. The applicant, Mr. Twain, will come speak on both the items at once. We'll do the public hearing. People can speak to both items and then we'll close the public hearing, ask questions, but then two separate motions and discussion. So item G2 is the zoning map amendment, CD 2023 011 ZC by Pike Design and Construction, Inc. And item G3 is the major land subdivision, number CD 2023 023 plat by Pike Design and Construction, Inc., to be known as Oak Ridge Villas. So Mr. McGeo, take it away.
Thank you, President Carlson. Yes, this is a zoning map amendment and a preliminary plat on a 1.25 acre property, which is located at the northeast corner of 20th Street Southwest and Third Street Avenue Southwest. The applicant is requesting a zone change from R1, which is mixed single-family residential to R2, which is a small lot, low-density residential. A preliminary plat has been submitted as well, which is considered a major land subdivision. And this consists of six residential lots, each with a general lot size of 42 by 220 feet. In terms of the zone change, staff would note a few things. The R2 proposal addresses city infill and redevelopment strategies of the comprehensive plan. It would help improve the tax base through revitalization of underutilized properties. Also provides higher density housing near areas to be served by high frequency transit, that being Broadway Road, the PTN. And, and it also provides infill to underutilized sites to meet city housing demands. Transit-oriented growth nodes are also identified in the comprehensive plan on the east side of Broadway Road. Staff recommends approval of the zone change, consistent with the policies and strategies of the comprehensive plan. And staff also finds the UDC criteria for zone change has been met. While staff notes that there is a six, six lot, single-family residential development proposed with this zone change. If the zone change is approved, there are other types of housing that could be built, such as a duplex, triplex, or fourplex development. In terms of the preliminary plat, the preliminary plat is a concept document. It's the first of two steps in the subdivision process. And it is subject to the review and approval of the preliminary plat document by the council. The owner would need to provide and submit civil improvement plans for review and approval of public works. The consultant must demonstrate design standards of the city can be met through the civil review. The consultant must demonstrate design standards of the city can be met through the civil review. The second step, which is the final plat, cannot be submitted until those plans, those civil plans are, are approved. There have been concerns expressed regarding storm drainage. Per the engineering standards, the development cannot cause conditions to worsen downstream from the site. The engineering consultant will need to demonstrate this in their improvement plans. The preliminary plat process is to demonstrate compliance with the underlying lot, dimensional requirements of the zoning district, and to provide a general outline for a critical infrastructure such as sewer water and storm drain plants. And the planning commission is recommending approval of this plat with seven conditions of approval. The comprehensive plan does provide objectives as well when it comes to infill development, such as consideration of the surrounding urban form and design character. As this plat is presented, it is a six lot, single-family residential development, which is generally about the same size lots that you could achieve in the existing R1 zoning district. I did want to add one other note. We are asking for a change of one condition. That would be condition number seven, where we are now asking for the developer to construct a six-foot-tall sight-obscuring privacy fence along the east property line from a point 20 feet north of the southeast property corner to a point 75 feet south of the northeast property corner of the eastmost lot. And the reason being is there is a lot of pretty dense cover of shrubs and, and tree coverage on, on the top part of that slope. And it probably wouldn't be beneficial to put a fence up in that area from both the, you know, maybe having to, to disturb roots. And then also just, it, it doesn't add a lot of visual screening to the adjoining neighbor. So we are asking for that change as well, just condition number seven. That concludes my report. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
We'll get back to you with our questions after the hearing, but quick point of clarification, is the developer aware of that change? Or is this new?
Yes, we, the developer and I had talked earlier today and they are comfortable with the way that condition now reads.
Thank you. All right. Well, with that, I'll invite the representative of the developer up, Mr. Twain. And assume 10 minutes is enough to cover both.
Very okay here. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, but is 10 minutes enough time for you?
So I'm sorry.
Is 10 minutes enough time for you?
Yes, we can make it work here. So I'm going to, I'm going to address, President Carlson, members of the council, Mayor Norton. I'm going to address both items, the plat and the zone change together. Is that, is that okay to do that, as I recall? Okay, very good. So before I get into the details of either one of those two, I'd like to make a statement about some of the facts. The situation here is that this site was a deteriorating property with a home that was, needed to be demolished, was unoccupied for a long time. Four car garages and some other buildings on the site. So Mr. Pike has removed those structures at his cost and getting ready to develop the site. As staff has mentioned, this is classified as an infill site, best suited for additional single-family residential homes, which is very consistent with the surrounding area. The preliminary plat application is being reviewed with a zone change, so it's transparent that we're going to do a single-family for sale, six lots on that site. We're not interested in quads or triplexes or whatever. We have a plat in this process, which is one of the applications you will be acting on this evening. So we want to be really transparent about that because there's been a significant time and money spent by our client to get these plans ready. Drainage, we, we have had requests by, we requested a continuation of the plat and the zone change to gather more information, field work, and revise the drainage runoff calculations as suggested by city staff. We have done that and we've re-submitted it. We have not had, the staff has not had time, city staff has not had time to review that. I want to emphasize that we're at a zone change and preliminary plat stage. We've already gone into final plans and been submitting them because of the sensitivity of the drainage issues. That's highly unusual to spend that kind of money at this point in time to solve them. But we have a solution for the drainage and it's at the city staff and they are the ones that would have to tell us if this is acceptable or not. So that's what's in process right now. Currently, there are a couple of accesses to the site off 20th Street, one off Third Avenue. There was some discussion about that at our neighborhood meeting. We are required to remove the ones we're not using on 20th Street and the one that we're not using on Third Avenue. So it'll be down to one access instead of three, which we think from a safety standpoint, that's a much better traffic flow, particularly on 20th Street, which is a non, is a collector's street. Traffic, we have a traffic waiver for the project from Public Works. As the increase in trips from this development doesn't meet any thresholds for a traffic study to be done. So it's a very insignificant increase in the traffic that's on there. In regards specifically to the zone change, again, we're looking for the low-density R2, allow for six single-family lots for sale. And there is as close affordable housing you'll see today when we're done with these, they'll fit into that, that category. Density, just to let you know that Oak Ridge has a density of 4.8 units per acre, which lies within a range of your, your 2018 P2S comprehensive plan. So section two, table 2-6 says that the average range should be between four and seven when you're dealing with residential housing. So we're at 4.8. Surrounding area is approximately four units per acre, so there's not much difference there. Criteria, all zoning amendments must be evaluated with the criteria section 60.500 from UDC code, the brand new code that you have. Staff has provided findings, supported meeting the criteria for the zone change. And planning commission recommended seven to one to approve the zoning. And regards to the preliminary plat, again, are just six lots, approximate size lots are 9,000 square feet. They're set back about 55 feet from 20th Street because in the future, we know that 20th Street will be improved. So we didn't want to push those things right up to the front at 25 feet because we have some problems with the future road going through there. So we set it back. City staff is asking our, our client to sign an agreement or contribution to future improvements to 20th Street. We will do that. There's some house plans in the council packet, if you'll, those, but they're pretty nice plans. And sanitary sewer and water main are available. So it is previously stated approval, the preliminary plat does not allow us to build anything. It allows us to get our final plans in and, or final plans approved and our final plat turned in. So we're not building anything with the plat and we're not building anything with the zone change. So again, staff is recommending approval with those seven conditions with number seven being modified. And we're in agreement with the restated condition, number seven. We effectively request approval, the preliminary plat is submitted. And I'd be available for any questions now or if it comes up later.
After the public hearing, we will let you know.
Thank you.
So I will reopen the public hearing and I do have a number of people signed up. So I'll call on you in the order that you are signed up. So we have Anna and Steve Amundson. Please introduce yourself and you have five minutes.
Good evening. My name is Stephen Amundson.
I'm Anna Amundson.
We live at 114 20th Street Southwest, just down from this, excuse me, this project. I wanted to add that this property is barren now and it has a hill to the, to the north and to the west, which this property collects the stormwater. I've been flooded twice and my neighbor's been flooded also on the north side and south side. We live on the south side. So this, this is a concern to us that this, where we're going to replace this open area with structure that will not absorb any water. The, there has been, in any of our discussion with the city, there's been no effort as to what's going to happen on the south side. The stormwater management has been discussed on the north side. In turning this into a multi-family unit is only legally down the road, it could still be a rental. We've already experienced the rental issue with my neighbor that a realtor bought that and turned it into a high-density rental unit. The guys all ended up in jail because of selling drugs, but, so it's, we haven't had a good experience with that this would stay single-family. There's nothing in R2 that says that, what we've heard. So that's our biggest concern is that it's going, going to R2. There's no down-the-road restrictions of being a rental. And it's just going to be a high-density building with no real, for us, no real concept of stormwater management. Thank you.
I agree on everything. Yep.
Thank you both. Steve Khan.
Good evening, council. Thank you for letting me give my comments. I live at the corner of 20th Street and First Avenue, so it's right behind the QuickTrip. And I actually purchased a lot that's to the west there, so it shows as a, as a separate lot. But, so I own that, both those lots there and then the neighbor is the one who's, who butts to this project. And I sent the council an email to hopefully sort of clarify my concerns. And hopefully, if you haven't been able to drive by, you can give an appreciation for how steep that hill is. And that's what's causing our concern about water. The way things were before with the Hanson House there, it was one house and a large garage and a small garage and a lot of land, grass for rain to absorb. And it would come down the hill towards QuickTrip. And the culvert at First Avenue and 20th Street can't handle the water the way it was before. And it would back all the way up to my house and we were flooded three times. That's without having six homes built with roofs and a large parking lot from one end of the property to the other, which leaves nowhere for the rain to absorb in the soil before it comes down the ditch to flood our backyard and our house. So I had folks from Public Works come out and they looked at it and immediately they said, oh, I can see why you have a concern here. That culvert is only 12 inches. There's no way that can handle the water coming downhill. And I said, I agree. That's the issue. And then two survey crews were out there to measure both for the applicant and I think also for the city. And both survey crews were very friendly. We, you know, visited with them and they said, oh, my gosh, I see what you're talking about. This is a steep hill from Third, Third Street down to your house. And then with six houses in here, I can see you have a major concern. And so they brought all the measurements. And then the applicant's engineer came out and he said, he had sent an email saying he wanted to propose possibly coming onto my property about 10 feet to put in a culvert and ditch it over to the center of 20th Street to the manhole cover. And that just wouldn't fit with the way our yard would look. So then we walked on the other side of the fence and he, he felt there would be enough room to do that and to put in a 24-inch culvert underground to the center of 20th Street to catch the water coming down the hill. If this goes through with six houses, they felt, I mean, I can't speak for them, but that was their proposal. That seems to make sense to me, however, until we see if it's actually going to catch all that water. It's still pretty scary thinking someone's going to plop six houses down. And we had a problem before and it only could get worse now. So I, what I struggle with, as they mentioned, seven conditions, but we don't know what those seven conditions are and, and how that would be addressed. So, so that's, that's our biggest concern is the water. It sounds like that's being addressed, but I don't know if that was going to be the formal decision. And here's the other thing, I know they mentioned these rates like 4.2 versus 4.4 as far as the amount of water. But everybody who came out there, who's an engineer and knows this stuff, said it doesn't seem reasonable that that's all that it's going to increase. But they did say, we know for certain the rate of flow coming down the hill will significantly increase. So whether the volume, you know, is more, more water or not, for certain, they've admitted it's going to be a very large rate of flow, meaning it's going to be coming much faster down the hill. So we can't afford to get flooded out. That's, that's our concern. So I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Kathy Homstead? Okay. Tom Mylander, Milander? Hello, please introduce yourself. You have five minutes.
I'm Tom Mylander. I live at 1703 Eight and a Half Avenue Southeast, speaking for myself and the applicant because I was involved in the vision of this property, but I'm also in the neighborhood. And I care about Rochester. I care how it looks. So I'm going to address more of the aesthetics of this property. These are single-family homes. I'm hearing about fourplexes, triplexes. These are just single-family homes. They're not designed to be rented out, but in an R1 neighborhood, I guess you can rent out houses anywhere. These are not offered to investors or offered to anyone. It's a free market. I care how Rochester looks. I know how 20th Street is. The public transportation on Broadway is two blocks away. So most of the traffic won't go on 20th Street or will head towards Broadway, whether they're going to work or walking or whatever they're doing. I just think it's a great little asset for the city to see six nice, single-family homes. We promise to have them as affordable as affordable can get. And we are sensitive to the geography. I suspect staff and our consultants have done a good job of addressing the water issues. Thanks.
Thank you. Mark Pine?
Good evening. I'm Mark Pike. I just wanted to come up so you put a face to the name. The only thing I really wanted to say is Bill Twain and Tom Mylander, I think, have done an excellent job expressing the views of, of mine. The only other thing I would like to say is, you know, change, I understand the neighbors. Change is hard. And I've lived in Rochester my whole life and I've seen a lot go on. And I understand change is hard, but I think our project has, you know, been well thought out and it's been well engineered. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry for calling you Pine when it's the Pike Design. That is all for who I have for items G2 and G3. Is there anyone else? Please come on up. Please introduce yourself and you have five minutes.
My name is Maureen Forbrook. I live kitty corner to the proposed project. And I've been in touch with Patrick quite a bit about our objection to it. We know, we, we know that you're going to allow some houses to go in there. Our problem is, is that it's six houses. If you look at the average size of the lots in the area, ours is three-quarters of an acre, half an acre. This doesn't allow for six houses. You know, I know we're talking a whole lot about the water, but we're also talking about the aesthetics of the, of the neighborhood. And that's our biggest concern is that you're trying to change the whole neighborhood. And then we have, I forget the gentleman's name. He's talking about the aesthetics and the neighborhood improving itself. A lot of us are middle to lower class. We do not have the money to put into an addition, fixing up our yard. And then for them to say that it's okay to put these houses in there to kind of force us to make these additions or improvements to our own home. I think that that is not reasonable for anybody coming into the neighborhood and building houses to say that, well, we're bringing this wonderful new house, let's make your house nice too. That's just not fair and it's just not feasible for the majority of the people in this neighborhood. The majority of the people are older. They don't have the money. And we just want to see the neighborhood preserved as it was. The house was not dilapidated one bit. It was a very nice farmhouse. That was the original house. If you don't know, that area used to be Apple Orchard. So the house was one of the main farms on that property to take care of the Apple Orchard. So we know that farther up the road, up into the Apple Ridge area, you do get nicer houses. But they're all the same. They're not ones like the, they just put another one in there with 440,000, where you have a house right next door, but that's not even $200,000, you know? It, it just, it forces us to say, well, maybe we can't live in Rochester anymore because you're forcing us to spend money we don't have. I work for mail. I got a 4% increase on my wages this year. That doesn't add up to a whole lot. Especially since they cut our insurance, now we have a 70/25 rather than an 80/20. So I know that's a whole lot to put into this, but it really needs to be thought out before you decide, okay, he's got the drainage thing fixed out, we're good to go. Let's think about the people. Let's think about the people that actually you are representing, that live in this neighborhood, that like their neighborhood the way it is, that would like to preserve it. And we just want it to be in, you know, even if you put three or four houses in there, you're kind of cramming them in there. So we're just asking you to take a step back. Don't look at, I mean, you can't tell what the property looks like to see in a little orange box. Take a walk, take a drive out there, see what the property looks like, see what the neighborhood looks like so that we have a better representation of the people that live in that neighborhood. So I just put that food for thought into your head. Take, you know, you are working for us. Please consider us when you're making this decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Was there anyone else? All right, I will close the public hearing and invite Mr. Twintin back up to respond. And you have five minutes, although we will then ask you any additional questions. Go ahead.
I wanted to respond to the drainage system in particular. I've worked in about 90 communities in the United States, over 11 different states. Rochester has, by far, the most regulated, stringent drainage requirements of any community I've worked in. I have confidence that they will, our city staff will not approve a drainage plan that increases the rate of runoff from pre- and post-development. That is your ordinance, and we'll stay within that ordinance. And we rely on city staff to check our work and accept our work, and we'll build whatever that has to be to keep that post and pre-development rates the same. So that's what's in process right now. And we are not going to be, at this point, doing the type of improvement that Mr. Kahn had talked about because he didn't want to have us disturb his lot, which is fine. So we're doing something different to compensate for that. So we are taking care of the drainage. There's about 5,000 square feet of additional impervious service from what was there before to what is there today. So that's not very much, but we will take care of the drainage. Just want to make sure of that. I don't get into values when I'm dealing with preliminary plots, but I could tell you that we have checked, assessed values of the neighborhood. I have a sample of those here. We're not going to be a lot greater than that, so I can, I can assure you that we'll have nice homes, but again, we're trying to shoot for affordable level. And the average in the sampling we did is we're going to be above that by a little bit, but not a great much. So I just want to say that. I have the copy of them here that we sampled on 19th Street, 20th Street, First Avenue, et cetera. So, thank you. That's all I have.
Okay.
Any questions?
It was a little bit quiet, I think, for some of those in the back. So just to confirm, you're working with staff on drainage? And that is the first condition of the approval in the preliminary plat? That by the time the final plat comes forward, you will have a management plan that abides by our ordinance, which you said is the most stringent of 90 communities you've worked in?
That is correct.
Okay.
And, and we, and again, we're not creating a process for this development project, any different than any other, other 150, 150 plots I've done here in Rochester. We're following the same procedure.
Okay, and the second thing is, we don't usually get into this on a preliminary plat, but home value-wise, you've assessed other properties in the area and found that these will be priced consistently with the surrounding neighborhood.
There will be a little bit, a little bit more than average values, yes. Because it's new construction, obviously, so we're going to be a little bit better than that.
Okay, can you just stay there, and we will ask questions? All right, Councilmember Bransford? And just try to speak into the microphone because it's hard to hear.
Sorry, I'm getting used to the new doodad. There was an interesting statement made where someone had said, let's go a little into their yard and build a culvert. Is it normal for water mitigation to, for a developer to ask to access a neighbor, a neighboring property to help with that? It just seemed a little strange.
It isn't with new construction, but you have to understand we're in an area that we're trying to retrofit a drainage problem, but we're not pursuing that particular option.
Other questions? Councilmember Keen?
A question for staff. The business on G2 is a zoning change from R1 to R2. It's my understanding that we have, what's it called? Transportation-oriented zoning just to the east of here. Can you talk about the surrounding zoning?
Yes, off to the, just to the east along Broadway Road is MXT.
Which is?
Which is, yeah.
Please.
Transportation-oriented development, which allows for a combination of, you know, businesses, office, retail, and housing.
Okay, I guess I'm just trying to understand, like, if this area, I guess my assessment would be 90% of the housing here was built pre-zoning, pre-R1. Many of the lots don't conform to what it is, but that's okay because they were built before we had the zoning. But there is new zoning just to the east that would be more dense than what, or more, or changing more so, and it didn't go as far west as, as Third Avenue.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Dennis?
Thank you. So this is, I think, maybe, I don't know, for the staff, a question here. So we need housing in Rochester desperately, and so I'm a big fan of anytime we have housing development. However, I also have had water in my basement, and it's not fun at all. When you have that many houses, is there any guarantee for the residents to, like, if, let's say, this is the stormwater, things are not doing what is planned, is there any way of making sure that the residents have that protection and that can be fixed or they can be compensated if they do get water? If that question, I'm not sure if I'm wording it correctly, but.
I can take that.
Sure. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilmember Dennis. Again, I, I think the best thing we can do is reiterate that the city standards state that the amount of runoff that goes off of that site today cannot be increased after this project. So I, I don't think I can go beyond that statement, but that is the standard. That is what we will hold the development to, and that is what our team will ensure is met before the project comes back or moves forward.
Thank you. All right, Councilmember Kirkpatrick?
Thank you. I'm seeing that there are no trees on the drawing for the development. Mr. Twintin? There's two trees located on the east. I'm not sure whose property those on, but they weren't included in the drawing. Are these like a garage walkout type home? There'll be excavation for the backside, the north side of the home?
The homes are tuck unders.
Tuck under, yeah. Okay, that's the correct term. Thank you. I couldn't remember that.
And there's a couple of different floor plans in the, in your packet that shows what Mr. Pike is going to be building.
Yep, I saw that. So I guess maybe to tighten up my question for you. How far away from that east lot line will the foundation of that easternmost house be?
10 feet.
So do you have any tree preservation plans for those two trees on the east side of that house then, on the east side of that lot?
Do we have any plans for what? I'm sorry.
To preserve the trees, if this is a, if this is a tuck under, you'll be essentially killing those two trees? I didn't see them on the plan, so I wondered if maybe you were just planning on taking them out? It looks like they're on the lot line. I'm driving around Google Earth right now, and I'm seeing some white survey stakes that I can't quite tell if those trees are on the, the property where the development is planned or if they are the.
In order to install the privacy fence, we may have to remove some of the scrub brush along that line because we're putting in a privacy fence at the request of the neighbor. So it's not required by code, but we're putting it in.
Right, and I.
So that maybe, we're not going to touch the trees on the neighboring property, and we're not taking out any big trees on our property, but there are some brush in there that, that we would be taking out, so.
So how, how far in from that lot line then is that privacy fence going?
Well, we're, we're planning to put the privacy fence on the property line, which is normally where you would put the privacy fence, right on the property line.
So I guess, again, I ask then, the trees are not on the planned drawing, so I assume that they will be taken down or there won't be care for when those frost footings are put in for the privacy fence to ensure that the roots stay there for those two trees, which are obviously doing quite a bit of shading on the west side of that house.
Yeah.
Keeping their utility bills down in the summertime.
How I can answer that is you'd almost have to go to the site to see the type of scrub brush that's there. It's not high-quality. So, yes, some of that will have to come out to put the privacy fence in.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm not seeing any scrub brush. I'm looking here right now. I just see two mature trees, a stake, right along with a fire hydrant there. And I understand the fence isn't going to go back where the grade changes significantly, that northeast corner of the lot. So, okay, you've answered my question. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
All right, Councilmember Palmer?
Thank you. Two questions for zoning. MX2, doesn't that end at 16th Street? So we changed that.
20th.
Yeah.
20th.
Does it end at 16th or 20th?
20th.
In the updated zoning.
20th. 20th.
A month ago?
Yeah, I thought it was the 20, it used to be 23rd. Used to be maybe, it used to be Highway 52.
I thought it was 16, 63.
But we changed it to 16th Street, I thought.
Council, Council President Carlson, Councilmember Palmer is correct. During the, during the zoning. During the zoning map update, we did. Shortened up the TOD zoning so that it ends at the fairgrounds. The earlier question should have been answered that this is MXS. The uses that Desmond cited are still the same. It would just likely be a shorter building.
Thank you. Number, question number two, is this condition number seven on a fence, when did this become a zoning rule that we're going to do fences on people's property?
It was a condition of approval that the Planning Commission wanted to see placed on, on the plat based off of testimony given by the next-door neighbor.
So our planning, our zoning says that when you have a lot lying next to an existing house, you have to put a fence in?
Our zoning code does not say that.
Where did we come up with that regulation? Somebody asked for it, and we decided that we were going to enforce that?
The neighbor did express their concerns about privacy and the six units that would now, you know, have views into their, into their yard. So Planning Commission did ask for that condition of approval.
Based on no requirement?
Just to add to that, buffer yard requirements are fairly standard in planning applications, so it's not an unheard-of requirement for zoning to require. It's just not required for us to have it in here naturally. But the, again, it was a reaction to the Planning Commission looking to have that condition added. You certainly have the ability to have that condition removed if you would like, although I would just note that the applicant seemed okay with that condition, and that's what we've been working through to refine, refine that.
So help me out, the Planning Commission must have been a week ago, two weeks ago?
A month, well, a month ago, roughly.
Okay, and today we called the developer and said, we want you to put a fence in?
No.
No, just updated some of the language in that condition that already talks about a six-foot fence.
When did that get put in?
The condition has been in place since the Planning Commission. The developer reached out this morning requesting some change to that language, and that's the language that's in front of you today, is the, is the changed language that was requested by the developer.
And it's agreeable to the zone?
Correct.
Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Bransford?
Two somewhat unrelated questions. First, is this a rezon type 1?
Well, the final plat will have to come back to City Council.
It will.
But in theory, once the final plat is approved, then it would be a staff level.
Okay, that answers my question. I, I do have a, an engineering question. I'm going to put on my engineer-scientist hat. The condition for not exceeding a 210 or 100-year storm event, how do you test that? So if you build a drainage system, do you flood the yard and then make sure that it doesn't exceed? How do you, how do you engineer that? Do you have software, modeling software? You know, how do you ensure that?
Good evening, President, Mayor, members of the council. It's, it's modeling software that our team will review. It's based on the, the grades, the soil conditions, the amount of impervious that all goes into their design as they're modeling those different storm events, and our team reviews those reports that are submitted.
Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Keen?
Yeah, thank you, thank you. On, on R3, or G3 is adopting a resolution, a major land subdivision, and it gets into, we do get that drawing. So question, I think it's for the developer. We're doing the curb cut off of 20th Street versus off of Third Avenue. I wonder why we decided to do that. Third Avenue seemed to be the natural place as opposed to the busier 20th Street. Is there a, like, a design reason why you wanted to come off of 20th Street? Yeah.
Councilmember, Mr. Keen, a couple of reasons. Number one, 20th Street is a collector's street, it's a higher-order street. When it gets improved by the city sometime in the future, that's where the major traffic is. We heard some discussion at our neighborhood meeting. They didn't want to have a, have the Third Avenue connection. So we took it out, and we, we think for safety reasons, it belongs on 20th Street.
That's interesting because that's the busier street to get on and off of. That's still is safer.
But it's going to be built to handle more traffic.
Okay, it's not that number of traffic. I agree with you. There's not a traffic issue there. I'm just wondering about the in and outs right on 20th as opposed to the controlled intersection with the stop sign at Third Avenue.
Well, and also 20th's supposed to have no parking, so that helps.
Okay.
That's the other reason.
Yeah, I mean, it's not something I'm trying to, I just looking at it and didn't know how it came to be.
But that, that was, those are the things that we took into consideration, those three things we took into consideration. The neighborhood telling us, the higher-order street, one access, and the fact that it's a safer condition with that volume of traffic coming out of it.
Thank you, thank you. My other question is going to be more directed at staff, but if you could stay there, Mr. Twintin. Just on the same thing, I, I, just through the public hearing, there was some confusion on, or like the, what are the conditions for? And I see the conditions are in the packet. Desmond, could you kind of do a high level, the conditions are the standard sort of conditions for a, a, a land subdivision? Or is there something unique here?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think there's anything really unique on this. Let me pull up my report.
Yeah, I've got them in front of me. I just, I just, some people in their testimony. On our packet, it's page, across page 450 to 451, there's the seven conditions. I, I'm not too worried about them, but I, they were a bit buried into the discussion, and I, apparently, some people missed them. So I'm just trying to see, I think I could categorize them as standard. The only thing that I think I, that Councilmember Palmer pointed out is the fence looks a little different than what I'm used to seeing.
Yeah, the fence is something that, that was an additional or something that was placed on there by the Planning Commission.
Okay.
Rest of it is, is pretty standard conditions.
And going back to the fence, then, this would be built, is there, is there an easement that it's being built on? Or is this like on the property line, or?
It can be built on the property line if it's under 60.
And then who owns that in the, when the six homes are there and the neighbors there? Who, who's the owner of the fence?
It would actually be the.
Sixth owner?
The one that's putting in the fence would, would be the owner.
Okay, so the sixth home there, that would be part of their property?
Right.
And theirs to maintain?
Right.
That, again, I'm just trying to get my head around the idea that, is it, it would be like a covenant that if it was damaged and wasn't repaired, someone would go to the city to get them to change it? Or is it, it's not something we're going to enforce?
Councilmember Keen, so in theory, it's a, it's a condition of the plat. So in theory, it's, it's required. And whoever purchases that lot, there's, you know, a condition on their plat that, that that fence be there. So I, I don't think it's a simple, I don't think it's a covenant, but I don't think it's as simple as saying they could just remove the fence if they chose to or something like that. It is a requirement on there. Going back to your conditions question, just for members of the public in the audience, on page 450, it's worth pointing out that the first condition is that prior to submitting the final plat, a stormwater management plan shall be approved. So that should, we, we should have a better answer to the stormwater management question before this is allowed to come back for City Council for a final plat.
Okay, yeah, that, that's all, that's helpful. Thank you. We're good. Thank you.
Councilmember Kirkpatrick?
Thank you. Mr. McGee, I heard you say up to a six-foot fence, but earlier it was referred to as a privacy fence. referred to as a privacy fence. Privacy fences are considered six feet or above, and one would need to apply for variance to create a fence six feet or above. So, I'm wondering if living material can be put into this, this zoning suggestion, this building plan instead of nonliving material. When you look at the grade change here going uphill to the west, a six-foot fence really isn't going to create any privacy because these are two-story homes going uphill to the west. So, there won't be privacy from the upstairs of either place, but instead by planting living material, you could actually have a screen that would afford privacy. And then you would have the ability to save the trees without boring every eight feet puddings for a privacy fence. So, can living material be something that's put into this versus a privacy fence, or is that not something we do?
So, again, I would just, going back to Councilmember Palmer's questions on this, this is not something that's actually zoning requirement. So, I think you need to ask the applicant if that's something they're willing to take on. I also would note that this isn't actually tied to any of the conditions. So, we don't actually have a tool to fully require this if the applicant says no. So, my personal opinion would be that this is a pretty good condition, and I think that this is something that is better than nothing. And so, I would just note that when asking the applicant to do something more than what's already noted in the condition.
So, the seventh condition is the addition of a privacy fence? I'm not looking at...
Yes, the seventh condition is the addition of a privacy fence with the exception of the trees in the corner, essentially.
Right, it's not going to go that full 226 depth? Is that what you said? They're 42 by 226?
Yeah, the lot widths are 42 by 220, yes.
220 depth, okay, thank you. So, I guess, Mr. Twynton, I'm just thinking about maybe offering an amendment to this because I would...
There's no point of order, there's no motion.
Right, right. Right, I'm just asking, Mr. Twynton.
She's just asking.
So, you are amenable to putting in a privacy fence. Would you be amenable instead to a requirement of living material for screening being put in? It's certainly a lot less expensive.
I think we would. One of the things we want to be careful of, if you look at the plat, we're starting the privacy fence 20 feet from the southeast corner. We're setting back 55 feet. So, that private drive going to lot number six that have headlight glare going to the neighbors, takes quite a bit of screening to, mature screening to be able to stop that, whereas a privacy fence would do it right away.
Okay, that's a very good point. Thank you. So, I guess my other question then is...
Well, it's not to say that we're going to do some landscaping in the area.
Right, no.
Anyway, I mean, it doesn't prevent us from doing landscaping.
Right, yep. I understand that completely. So, because we don't know the impact of this construction on the stormwater yet, and that hasn't been approved, I guess my concern is that plat needs to be finalized with those structures in place to know whether it'll be approved or not, and then we want to try and save those trees.
Correct.
Okay. I guess there's nothing that we can probably do about this then at this point. We've approved the zoning and we just need to wait to see if the city, if what you're designing is going to follow. And I did hear you say that you are not interested in putting up a duplex, a triplex, or a fourplex here. You are only about these individual homes that will be for sale for private owners.
That is correct. I mean, that's why we did the plat. We spent a lot of time and money doing that plat and construction plans.
And if the city comes back and says you need to remove two of these or three of these, it's just too much impermeable surface, you are prepared to do that?
Yeah, well, again, it's like a 5,000 square foot increase in previous surface, so it's really pretty small. But we have to go by whatever the city staff tells us we have to do.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mayor Norton?
Thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to reiterate something that I think Councilmember Keen was getting at, and that is, we had a resident here who isn't aware of those seven conditions. And so, what I'm going to do is leave my paperwork that has the list of the seven conditions over with the clerk. So, if you want to take it home today to look at them, you can. We've mentioned that they're routine, but what's routine to us and to the staff is different than what's routine to a community member. So, I'm just going to make those available at the clerk, to the city clerk, and you're welcome to copy them and share them with neighbors.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Palmer?
Yeah, I just want to be clear that the City of Rochester does not enforce covenants at all. And so, you have people with covenants. We do not enforce those. This is not a suggestion. This is a requirement of our zoning. The reason that we have six-foot or less fences is because they don't require a permit or engineering. Anything above six feet would require engineering, which is a large cost and hard to do. So, that's why we're not, we don't have higher than six-foot-high fences. I just want to make sure everybody understands that. So, thank you.
No more questions?
No questions.
Any other questions?
No, I was ready to make a motion.
All right, go ahead.
Like to do a two-part motion. Number one, approving the zoning map amendment, CD 2023-011Z, for 1.5 acres from R1 to R2, and then direct the city attorney to prepare an ordinance.
Second.
Great. Councilmember Keen, you have the floor?
So, there's been about five or six categories of issues brought up here. I think the main one, from my perspective, is stormwater, and that's got to be addressed at the final plat. I've worked closely with the neighbors on some of these things, but also with city staff. And again, I know Mr. Twynton mentioned, these guys take their work seriously, and I know the development group has been out there kind of doing measurements there, too. The topography here, like, for those who haven't driven around there, it's a crazy place there. There's two drop, and we talked about how it is to the west and to the north, but then to the south, it drops off really fast. Character of the neighborhood's the other one, and I think this is an important thing. I know that someone split a neighbor, a large lot over on 4th Avenue at 18th Street recently. So, there are some new developments like that going on, adding to our housing stock, which is something we like to see. But, and it's the same thing with the character, everyone talks about six lots in here. There's a corner, southeast corner, about less than two blocks away from here, that has six houses in about the same land. And it's not like a zoning mistake. There was no zoning when this place was built. I mean, this was built outside the city limits, and it was built by people raking up what was apple orchards or farmland to help people live in Rochester as we were growing in the 50s and 60s. So, we now have these zoning rules, but if you look around this area, you can see that this wasn't developed under the city. It's not that sort of, that thing. There is the concern with density, but I guess when you talk about infill development, there's going to be more homes put up in some neighborhoods. That's the nature of how we expect to expand our city over the next 40 and 50 years, is we have the same geographic footprint of St. Paul with 200,000 less people, that we know we can fit more people in here and then reduce the cost to the rest of us, that city services will be available for them. So, you know, if you are an existing neighborhood, there probably, there might be more density over the coming years. The other topic that came up, and I don't know how to address this, is rent versus own. And I know of some of the war stories with things like people opening what I consider to be businesses like Airbnb down the street, and I think that is disruptive in a residential neighborhood. At the same time, private property rights have the ability to take their property and rent it out if they so choose, and we don't have ordinances against that. So, I have to kind of work through the laws we have right now, but also the policies we have towards how we're going to grow. And we're going to work hard to make sure we don't end up causing problems. And I think we've got the right people to do that. Thanks.
Well said. Councilmember Keen, Councilmember Wall?
Thank you. At Mr. Khan's invitation, I did go down and park and walk the property. I appreciate the neighborhood concerns. I live on a property that was recently rezoned from R2 to R3. So, I also appreciate kind of a neighborhood angst about what could or will happen. When there's talk about density, I look directly across the street on 20th and drawing a straight line down the east border, there are currently five lots that are directly south of what would be six lots. So, the density doesn't look terribly different to me than what we already see on that street and in that block. I would also remind my peers that there is proposed legislation in St. Paul that would take these kinds of zoning decisions away from local city councils, that we will, if that legislation is approved, we won't have any kind of density zoning discussions at this level anymore, and our citizens won't be able to appeal that.
Thank you, Mr. Wall. Councilmember Bransford?
Yeah, I don't like that legislation any more than you do. It's wrong to take away municipal powers from a city council. What I would like to ask, and I understand we have minimum standards of 2, 10, and 100-year flooding, that, you know, we leave this neighborhood after the development, if the development occurs in a better place. Many times when we have water mitigation plans from a new development and neighbors have concerns, sometimes we overengineer a little bit. And, you know, we already see water issues in Steve's house and in neighboring houses because of a low 12-inch culvert. So, I'm not making a motion to amend or anything like that. I'm just asking as a representative of the community, that maybe we think about a little overengineering here so that not only is this water mitigation not an issue, but that we actually help the neighborhood feel dryer. Thank you.
Mr. Bransford, any final comments?
Council President.
Sure.
Point of order, my apologies. I don't think I heard Councilmember Keen just mention or incorporate the change that Desmond talked about in condition seven.
Good, yeah, good point. Let me amend. The motion was to, no, I'm sorry, the conditions are on G3, and I'm only moving on G2.
Okay, thank you.
Pretty good. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. So, motion for G3?
So, G3 is, I would move to adopt a resolution approving major land subdivision by Pike Design as Oak Ridge Villas with six conditions and a sixth condition adjusted per city staff.
Seven conditions.
I'm sorry, seven conditions with the added condition on the fencing.
Second.
All right, Councilmember Keen, you have the floor again.
Again, part of my problem with talking about this is we're into like the final plat discussions and a lot of this, and I think we should leave those for final plat. I think I'm glad to see the development team being responsive here and working with city staff. I know they had engineering groups out on 20th Street last week, kind of looking at this water flows and how they could simulate this. And I'm confident we're going to get to a good place, but again, we have to see that happen before we can.
Other discussion? Just a quick thank you to the neighbors and to our team and the developers as well in being really thoughtful about this and hoping that it does fit into the fabric of the neighborhood and not be a detriment related to additional water concerns. So, thank you for being here and speaking up. That's part of our process. And thank you to you, Mr. Twynton, for your team being diligent about meeting our stringent regulations. Any other thoughts? All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. All right, we are going to take a 10-minute break. We'll reconvene just after 7:50.
7:30.
Recording stopped.
Recording stopped.
Welcome back, everyone. We are moving on to item G4. And again, this item was also continued-
Recording in progress.
-a previous meeting, and it is the reconstruction of 7th Avenue Northwest from 7th Street Northwest to 10th Street Northwest. Project number J7837. And this is, uh, an item that requires four fifths of council to vote for it to pass. So just a note, and I will turn out, turn it over to Mr. Dombrowski to introduce.
Good evening, Mayor, President, members of the council. As you recall, two weeks ago, we opened a, a project hearing for the 7th Avenue Northwest Reconstruction Project from 7th Street to 10th Street. This is the first hearing in a series of two per the, uh, Chapter 429 Special Assessment Process. Tonight, we would be looking for, uh, four actions that are requested, those being ordering the project to be made, ordering the plans to be prepared, uh, adopting a resolution that will set the assessment hearing for April 22nd, and then finally, uh, ordering the, the assessment role to be prepared and then presented at that next hearing. Uh, you would be able to, when you get to that point, uh, you would be able to take all those actions in, in one motion. So, um, again, it's a three-block project, similar to a lot of the assessment projects we've been talking about as we think about the process, and, um, tonight, we have a hearing people can, uh, speak at as well as, uh, the next, uh, assessment hearing in a month. So with that, I'll pause for the hearing and any questions afterward.
Wonderful. All right, we will open the public hearing, and I will invite Sarah Paisies. And please correctly pronounce your name. You have five minutes.
I am Sarah Paisie.
Paisie.
Um, it's okay, it's not phonetic. Um, and I actually found out about this project. I live, um, between 7th Street and 10th. I'm one of the parcels being impacted by this project. Um, I found out about it because, uh, Sean Palmer has had to listen to me complain about the speeding on, in our neighborhood. Our street runs north-south. There are no north-south facing stop signs from 7th Street all the way to 14th Street. It is a Rochester Public Transit, um, bus line. Actually, multiple routes go down our street, um, all morning, all night, and all weekend, and very often, very quickly. Uh, this is not limited to the bus system. It is also residents. Our street is treated as a through street, um, especially during the Broadway project. We had a lot of, um, traffic that was using our neighborhood as a through neighborhood because it was faster. Um, my concerns with the project are just that we actually tackle this problem. I have small children. There are, um, as you can see on this, there's this huge parcel that is, um, I'm assuming county near our city, it's Parks and Rec. Um, and there's access by one of those two parcels next, uh, door to it. Those are actually county-owned homes. They're in the floodplain, they are rentals. The access to the bike path is basically up the one closest driveway and then on to the path. There are a lot of, there's a lot of traffic in our neighborhood, not only driving, but foot traffic. People from Mayo Clinic Park between, um, the house on the corner of 7th Street, all the way up to mine, and then they either ride the bus or they walk because it is almost right under a mile to walk to the clinic and takes about 15 minutes. I would really like to see, I've seen these projects where you have put out bumpouts, not only in, um, Country Club Manor by Judd Hill, but also on 2nd Street Northwest and Kuzki. And unfortunately, I don't think the bumpouts or even the narrowing, proposed narrowing of our street by four additional feet will actually sufficiently help minimize speeding in our neighborhood, especially because then it would go back out and the rest of the street from 10th all the way to 14th would continue to be four feet wider than ours. So I really am insistent that these plans include more than just narrowing our street to control speeding. I also have no, no understanding of how assessing works and how, I've looked at the feasibility report multiple times since I heard about the project. The estimated cost that will be passed on to these 20 parcels of land is $136,261, or sorry, $136,261. And I want to know, like, how you came up with that number and how the other numbers are going to be absorbed by, um, sewer water treatment. I have it here. Water utility, sewer utility, storm utility. Um, I want to know, do you anticipate that this project would go over the budget that is proposed? And will those costs be passed on to us as homeowners? Um, I've had a lot of conversation actually with Dylan. Um, he's been very patient and has been very informative, but, um, that's really kind of what I'm looking for still with this project. So, thank you.
Thank you. Lucy Creasel. Please introduce yourself, and you have five minutes.
Yes. Um, I'm Lucy Creasel. Good evening, everyone, thank you for having me. So, um, I live on 7th Avenue and, yeah, I'm, I'm, um, I'm here tonight to share, basically, my role is to share some survey results. Um, I walked around and gave a survey to those who will be directly impacted in this moment in time with the parcels. And as Sarah, my neighbor, shared, um, if you're not familiar with the area, the makeup is 20 parcels. One is owned by Park and Rec, two, Olmsted County Housing, and then, um, 12 are privately owned and six are rentals. So it's like a real big mix. So I just want to share the summary from 10 people replied, so it wasn't everyone, um, but just a little slice of what people are, what they love about the neighborhood and what they're concerned, et cetera, et cetera, and then I'll just kind of like recap with some questions I have. So, um, so the residency ranges from one year to 20, to over 27 years in the area. Age range, 20 to 80. Favorite parts of the neighborhood are proximity to places, place of worship, Mayo, St. Mary's, local businesses, public transit, gas and groceries, proximity to nature, the bike trail, the Cascade Creek, the bike path, trees, birds, and the ambiance. So it's relatively quiet, interactive, and safe, although it is, uh, a busy bus route. Least favorite parts of the neighborhood? The memorial swing was taken out, that came up a lot. Speed, a long-term concern on the street. I should also point out that what I'm reading here is not paraphrased. These are kind of, these were direct words from my neighbor. So, um, speed, a long-term concern on the street. It's a cut-through street. Rochester Public Transit speeding, traffic laws not obeyed, late-night speeding, truck-related distribution and bustle. Main concerns, speed and bus traffic. You're gonna hear a lot of repetition in what I'm saying tonight, and that's partially intentional, and then it's also just what everyone has shared. So, um, parking and accessibility to home. So they're worried about safety and accessibility and where parking is gonna be. Street narrowing, when it's already narrow with two cars parked and two buses passing at any given time. Noise disruption, cost and options for payoff. How responsibility will be determined with damage to homes, personal property, or trees. Um, how this will affect real estate taxes. Rent may go up for those who are renting, uh, tran, and just a transparent disclosure of happenings. And then there's a question about the RPU sewer insurance, and two of the owners are currently enrolled in that. So some of the questions that came up from the street residents. Breakdown of the assessment, we'll want to know that. Um, what are slowdown options, like the radar speeds, radar speed signs or stop signs? Does a timeline take into account inopportune weather interruptions? If the cost of the project increases, are parcel owners responsible for the difference? How are trees being affected and are protected? If trees are lost because of the construction, will these trees be replaced and at what cost? So those are just, it's just kind of an overview, and I'd just like to recap with, um, questions that I guess I would appreciate responses to as someone who lives in the neighborhood. So when, um, here we go. Okay, well, I heard that there was maybe gonna be a traffic audit, and I feel like that would be really important on the street before understanding what a design situation would look like. So when is a traffic audit gonna take place? And, um, how will that address the potential impacts of the narrowing? I agree, I'm a cyclist, I do agree that narrower streets are safer streets. However, curious how that works in tandem with a potential bus thoroughfare, and if that's gonna go all the way, you know, 7th to 14th or not. Who's gonna be interpreting these results? What is gonna be considered in the redesign to handle the current and then the future heavy traffic? So, and to me, this also includes, um, the, although it is adjacent, the 7th Street and 7th Avenue Northwestern intersection. There's kind of a dangerous sightline problem with the bridge. People kind of act like it becomes a four-way there. So just something to think about. Um, who will be our human point of contact during the entire process for the inquiries? How are assessments made? Is the assessment based on the number of fixture units, AKA toilets, showers, therefore water consumption? Or is it based on street square footage or property value assessment? Um, and is there a benefit for having paid for the RPU sewer tax? Like, is it applicable in this reconstruction or not, and why or why not? And, yeah, yeah, my turn. Thank you. So those, those are all of our, our questions and comments from the neighbors, and just appreciate your time. Thank you for your reassurance by addressing these questions.
Thank you, Ms. Creasel. Bernie Carlson?
Hello, I'm Bernie Carlson, uh, with my sister Monica Rouse. We do not live on 7th Avenue, but we did grow up on 7th Avenue. Um, and our 88-year-old father still lives there in the middle of the block. Um, so we're here kind of representing him. Uh, we've talked about Lucy and, um, and Sarah, uh, a little bit, and I'm s- here tonight seeking some clarification on items that I've read in the feasibility report that I pulled off your website this afternoon. It's dated in February, but I have some items that I just want clarification on. Um, I'm gonna read word for word what it says for the special assessment. It says pursuant to city policy, the cost to reconstruct 7th Avenue Northwest associated with this project may be assessed to abutting property owners. The assessment rate for any special assessment is computed by distributing 25% of the eligible construction items across the parcels on the project based on the Olmsted County Assessor's estimated market value total percentage share. So my first question is, what makes up those eligible construction items? I would like to see a breakdown of that based on what's in the feasibility report. And then I would also like to know, um, the estimated market value, the parcel breakdown. What it says here contradicts what I had heard in a conversation with Councilman, um, Palmer this afternoon, where I understood the assessment was gonna be based on linear square footage on the street, not assessed property values or market value. I share concerns about the wisdom of narrowing that street, uh, by four feet based on it being a, uh, city bus line that, uh, sees a lot of traffic. And, um, I think it will, it's continuing to see an increased level of downtown parking. So there's often cars parked along both sides of the street outside of the, you know, the winter rules. So narrowing that doesn't make a lot of sense to me unless there's some other changes made as well. We are concerned about accessibility to the homes during the project. It says it's gonna start in June and continue till November. We'd like to know that our father can get in and out of his driveway during that time. Again, he's 88 years old, he doesn't drive himself, but he needs people to come and visit him and take care of him and things of that nature. So, um, and then there's a couple numbers in the feasibility report that there's one that the assessment total is 136 some odd thousand, and then further down on that same page, it says 25% eligible street reconstruction items in an amount of 92,612. So that's about a $44,000 difference, and I don't know which of those is the correct figure. So I'd like clarification there. Just looking at my notes. I think, oh, and then as noted earlier, the, there are city and county-owned properties and along the block, and I'm wondering if those, either, for either one of those values, if they include the parcels of land that are owned by the city and the county in either that 92 some odd thousand dollar number or the 136,000 dollar number. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you both. That's all I have on my list, was there another person? Come on up, Mr. Creasel. You know the drill, introduce yourself, and you have five minutes.
Thank you very much. Well, this might be shocking to you, I wasn't gonna speak on this particular event tonight, but I would say those that came forward did such an exemplary job pointing out various bullet points of this potential project that I want to stress a few things. I'm very familiar with 7th Avenue. And the first thing that comes to my mind is who will benefit? Who's going to benefit from this particular project? Why are we doing this project? I suspect there's maybe some aging or maybe under-capacity sewer lines and stormlines, not sure. But I want a thorough explanation. Assessments based on frontage. Here again, that's where I started with, who will benefit? I don't think that is the approach that should be taken, making, based on frontage. Because those around the frontage will be benefited. If you, if, if any of you would take a walk in that particular area, you will see that the way that that neighborhood unfolded, accessibilities to some of the homes are off of that street that, let's say, live behind the street that, uh, will be assessed less than those on the front of the street. Uh, I would encourage all of you at some point in time to be at this, at the south end of 7th Avenue when buses, uh, turn onto 7th Avenue. And when you're there at this, at the south end, look at the edge of the bridge, extremely dangerous. I have seen multiple times, and I'm sure the neighbors have seen multiple times, children with their parents or someone walking on that street. And the traffic is so fast as relates to going in either direction, but the most dangerous is coming from the south and turning onto the north side. The buses need a, the, the full width of the street at that point in time to be able to turn. They have, and what comes to my mind is what happened to, uh, West Center Street. When West Center Street ends up being a thoroughfare for buses. If you're going to narrow this 7th Avenue, there should be no bus traffic at all. It is dangerous right now when a bus turns onto 7th Avenue. And if it's narrowed more and somebody is parking on either side of the street because of it being non-metered, so they can conveniently park and, and, and walk to Mayo. That is not fair to the neighborhood. And I'm going to say again, who will benefit? If you narrow the street, it's going to be more dangerous for anybody that's walking on the sidewalk or is trying to, uh, turn on, turn off of 7th left to right. The traffic speed is, is, uh, too fast for that particular neighborhood. The bridge to the south is a barrier, so there isn't a line of sight looking left or right. And turning on the 7th Avenue to the north is quite dangerous, especially if you're at the edge and a bus wants to turn. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kreisel. Anyone else like to speak on this item? Come on up. Please introduce yourself and you have five minutes.
Sure. I only need one. My name is Chris Allen, I live in that neighborhood as well. I didn't even know that this was a possibility. I walk there all the time with my, uh, my girls who are 28 and 32, especially when COVID happened because we were housebound. So, uh, that's a lovely stretch of, of street. There, there are buses coming through, it's scary when they come by. I don't know why they don't go, um, farther to the east, um, because it's a very small street. It's filled with lovely homes. So I would, I would not like to see that narrowed nor homes inaccessible during that time. I have an 88-year-old father too, which is why I live in Rochester. I might not live in Rochester forever, but I have to live here until he passes. And he's, could live to 108, the way he is. He's amazing. So that's just my two cents, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. Any final comments? All right, otherwise we'll close the public hearing. And Mr. Dombrowski, I assume you've been keeping track of questions? So I will let you get started, and then if we have additional questions, we will ask.
Sure, I, I think I did my best. I guess to, to start with, just the construction as, as a, any, any construction project is an inconvenience that, you know, so aside from the assessments we're here to talk about tonight, it's part of our team's job to communicate with property owners of the impacts and be available. We always make, uh, our inspector, who's in the field, available as well as the project manager. And people know how to reach us as they have questions or they might have. I've talked with a couple of property owners, there's some special needs along this project, so our team is aware of that. Property owners are, they need access to their driveways during projects. The contractor will need to maintain that access, uh, as best as possible throughout the project. But there will be a point in time when they're reporing the concrete apron for their driveway that we'll have to communicate where they won't be able to get into their driveway for a couple, two to three days while the concrete's curing, things like that. But overall, it's their responsibility when we hire a contractor to maintain access and communicate those things as we're staging different projects. So that is something we deal with on any project, and we, we will on this one as well. For the assessment number that, that was noted twice in the feasibility report, I had a typo and carried over one of the numbers from our previous feasibility report. As directed in the council action, it is the 136,000 dollar number. The 92 is from a previous project we did earlier this year, so that was my fault. However, everything, you know, we presented in the assessment roll shows that 136,000 dollar number. As far as how they're calculated, it's only the roadway items. We take the pavement, the rock, the curb and gutter, the driveways, uh, any grading to prep the street. And then we take the total amount and we, 25% of that is assessed to the property owners and the city pays the others 75%. And that is not calculated on a per-front footage cost. The policy is based on property valuation, so we take that overall number and the total value of all properties. And if your property is 10% of all the properties in that neighborhood, you're going to pay 10% of the assessments, just using a random number. None of these are, but, um, so it's, it's based on the policy that the council adopted, and it's spread based on valuations.
Can you just quickly say how the rest of the items are paid for, so?
Yeah, the rest of the items are paid, so the 75% paid by the city for the street portion typically comes from our street reconstruction funds. We have utility funding for sanitary sewer, water main, stormwater utility that will cover, uh, the utility work being done for the project. And that's really what's driving this project is the, both the age of the street, but the, the utilities are, you know, 1940s, 1950s vintage. So they've reached their, their useful life. And we would reconstruct the street at this point and not, not expect a street reconstruction to happen again for 50 years. Uh, the utilities will last longer than that. As far as the assessments, could they go, if, if the prices come in higher, will they go up? No, we never assess higher than what is shown on the assessment roll. That's the cap. And I've shared this before, it's not a guarantee on every project, but our assessment project last year near Sunset Terrace Elementary, the bids came in, uh, good for us. So we reduced the assessment amounts, and in fact, some people had already prepaid, and we had to refund them a portion of that assessment because they had paid too much. So I'm not saying that would happen, but that, that's always a potential. We never go higher, but we can go lower. Related to speeds and design features, we are going to be doing a speed study here when we need to put traffic tubes down to, to count and collect the speed data. We want to make sure we get, I realize we haven't any snow this winter, but now we're having snow in the forecast. So we, we are going to wait till it warms up because we can't have those tubes down if the plows are going to be coming through the next day in order to collect that data. So we'll wait here until the spring, but we'll collect data before the project begins. And then following the, the end of the project, we'll do a follow-up speed study as well. So that should be happening sometime in April. As far as traffic calming features, our team has started to look at bump outs at the intersection of 10th Street and 7th Avenue. Also at the corner of 7th Street and 7th Avenue. As mentioned, the street is narrowing, it's not a huge narrowing, it's around three feet. Per our new design standards for a two-lane roadway with trap, uh, parking on each side, that will still provide room for, uh, vehicles traveling in each direction with 11-foot lanes, which is our standard in this scenario. So, um, everything we've seen, uh, with the bump outs shows that they are effective traffic calming measures. You know, we just did a couple pilot studies in neighborhoods and collected speed information where we just piloted with, uh, delineators, tube delineators to mimic how bump outs would work. And we saw speed reductions of up to three mile, right around three miles per hour on each corridor. So they are proven and effective measures to, to calm traffic and speeds. Counter to many people's thoughts, stop signs aren't a speed control, uh, you know, method. So, um, our team will talk about, are there any other things we could do with this corridor? Beyond the narrowing of the roadway and the, um, bump outs, uh, and take that into consideration. Trees along the corridor, I don't know all the trees that will be impacted at this point. The plans obviously aren't done, um, we'll need to look at that. And, and, and if there are trees impacted, talk about, do we incorporate and work with parks to, to get a tree planting plan put together for this corridor? So I don't necessarily have that answer right now, but we, we will look into that.
Whether the county parcels are contributing to the assessment was a question?
Correct, the city parcel and the two county parcels are on the assessment roll and will be paying towards this number. As far as the collection of assessments, um, they are collected, either people can pay them. Many times people, obviously, these aren't small numbers, so they choose to put them on their property taxes. We do not certify them for collection with the county until the project is fully completed, uh, and closed out. So typically, we have carryover work, just miscellaneous cleanup, you know, whether it's seating, turf in the boulevards, whatever it might be. This project at the earliest it could be completed is this fall, and we would have to close it out and have those numbers of the county by December. In all likelihood, it probably doesn't happen till the end of 2025, for which it would then go on the property taxes in 2026, uh, over a 10-year period at, at the interest rate noted in the, uh, report. As far as the people enrolled in the, the utility insurance, I would have, I'll have to check in, uh, with RPU on how that works as we're doing replacement projects. That's a new one for me, so I, I will have to look back, uh, look into that one. We aren't, uh, parking changes came up, we aren't proposing parking changes. I would note that people are concerned about, uh, parking in the neighborhood. We do have a residential permit parking program, uh, where we can, uh, if we get a petition with 75% of the properties, uh, that sign, we evaluate it and they, we can create that permit parking zone. Uh, we do have a lot of those, you know, closer to downtown, but as noted, this isn't that far of a walk from the Mayo campus. So that would be a possibility if that's a, you know, a concern of the neighborhood.
How about the bump outs affecting the buses turning onto the road?
We, we can run the turning movement calculations, but quite honestly, if, if the bus gets there and there's a car and they need to wait to make that turn, then they're going to need to wait, wait to make that turn safely. And, um, you know, we would rather see a, a, you know, narrower street with shorter pedestrian crossings, so that we can't have drivers just whipping around corners because it's more light open and, and easy to make that turning movement. So if, if, if that happens and they need to slow down and wait for that vehicle, uh, that may happen, but we can look at the turning movements just to see how, how critical that, that would be. And if we have to pull those corners back a little bit to accommodate that.
Other questions, Councilmember Palmer?
Let's go to construction. Um, you're going to have a supervisor on, onsite or a phone number that they can get ahold of, like we've done on the other projects. It's worked out pretty well for us. You're going to have, um, knowledge ahead of time for everybody so to know kind of the plan was going to happen. That's what we're going to do. Replacing the, the sewer, um, is, is, um, been scoped and not in good shape. That's basically the reason we're doing this, but then the road gets redone at the same time. Is that correct?
Correct.
I'm worried about parking for, for the citizens, you know, who, are they going to have to park somewhere else? Are we going to set something up that they can park somewhere? How are they going to get to their house, groceries, people?
For the most part, the contractor is going to have to provide access. It might be limited, like you need to come in from the north or the south, but throughout the project, they need to provide access. It's going to be on a, you know, dirt and/or gravel to get to your driveway during the different phases of the project. Uh, if people have special needs, that's where they reach out to our team. And, you know, when we're doing commercial corridors, it's a business we hear from that says, we have this major delivery coming on this day at this time, those are the things we coordinate. So if people have different needs, I, I did note earlier, there's a couple, um, residents with special needs that I've already shared with the team. You know, what I've heard from the neighborhood. So those are things we just have to coordinate, and that's on us to make it as least inconvenient as, as we possibly can.
And, and so we're narrowing the, the road because that's the new standard that we have, which will take the, the traffic down by three or four or five miles per hour. Is that kind of your, your hope?
I'm just, what I, anecdotally, what we learned from the, the most recent neighborhood traffic calming projects in our speed studies, we reduced those speeds by three miles per hour on, on both those corridors on average. So, um, again, it's a proven, proven traffic calming method, and it, it, it should lead to slower speeds and, and a safer street, especially thinking about people who want to be crossing that roadway with the shorter pedestrian crossings when we incorporate bump outs. Unfortunately, we can't do it all the way to 14th. But if we see it's effective and the neighborhood to the north wants to petition for a traffic calming project because we're still having concerns to the north, they would have the, the ability to do that. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Keen?
Uh, yeah, I got a couple of different things here. Just on the city bus thing, is there a standard for, like, city buses usually run on major arterials versus collectors? Is there like a standard that way? Or, or, and is, is there also a standard for size and direction? Like, they're always two-way streets, or they're always something?
I'd have to check with the transit team and what we have in our transit development plan. But we have a, a number of neighborhood streets that, that we need to be able to provide bus service, uh, you know, to, to the community and promote that as an option for transportation. So we would typically obviously focus more on the local collectors, but, um, we definitely have local streets that have bus routes.
Sure, sure, and I will note, there's lots of people who really like having the bus on their street, so it's not always a negative. I've run into it being like, as you narrow the streets, does it become a concern? Second question, and this is the one that bothers me just generically with these projects. I look at this one point, I think it's the 1.1 million dollar, I may have the wrong one, but this is being driven by the sewer utility, and I think they're carrying about 15%. It just, I just want to get some feel for the fairness of the, like, the person who's calling for the project carries such a small part of the expense. Can you kind of go through the complete streets and how we cost-share? When, um, I know we've dealt with one where RPU wants to do something, how do they, how do they carry their costs? Plus the cost of directing the other groups to do work?
Yeah, I, I, we have a cost-sharing agreement with RPU and, and, and as part of that cost-sharing agreement, the utilities do pick a portion, pick up a portion of the roadway cost. So the, the work that's shown in this RCA, we will correct it as we bring it forward when the, we get our final bids. It's only showing the total amount of sewer work. However, we're going to split out that street cost to show the portion that will be paid by RPU and by stormwater and by sanitary sewer. So that will be collected or corrected and codified in, in our recommendation when you go to award the project.
Okay, a last question, just, um, I'm going through this, uh, the, the way it's presented in the packet, and I, I can't explain back to you why this is a supermajority vote versus a normal, uh, a, a request for council action.
It's, it's related to the chapter 429 state statute, and that's the requirement of the statute.
Could you just help me explain that again? What, what, when you say it's a state statute that's specific to this project versus a?
Specific to a special assessments.
Okay, so, all right, so there is nothing special on this one? It's just any sort of assessment takes a supermajority vote?
It takes a four-fifths vote is actually how the statute is written. So in that case, it's six council members.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions, Councilmember Dennis?
Thank you. So just have to say, I'm super impressed by the residents who've done all the studies. So thank you for all your groundwork in the neighborhood. A couple of questions for Dylan or whoever wants to answer. These wide turns of the buses, has delineators been already installed to test the turns of the buses? Like, have the drivers of the buses been, uh, notified or having, because if, if the delineators are there, that you can see exactly how the buses are going to be able to go around these bump outs? Have that?
We, we have not tested it, however, we can model it with software, but I will talk with the transit team if we need to take a bus out there and just look at the corridor. Obviously, the transit team, we work very closely with them on a number of things. So I'll reach out to them and we can talk through that and understand if they have concerns that we can. So I'll reach out to them and we can talk through that and understand if they have concerns that we can make sure we incorporate into the project.
So that, just to clarify, the bump ups are only going to be at the ends of the roads, not throughout?
Correct, at the intersections. We, we aren't proposing a mid-block through this segment, it's.
Okay, so, and, and the homeowners that are right near there have been a lot of public engagement, so they know what's going to be happening. Because those, I mean, I have a lot of experience in Ward 6 with, as you know, delineators and traffic calming. And it impacts the street cleaners, it impacts plows, it impacts their driveways become longer when you, when you have a, you know, more street. So I, I just, has, has those residents been notified? Or like really what that's going to entail having that extra concrete in front of us?
We actually aren't going to do any of those sort of features with this project at the mid-block where it would lengthen someone's driveway because the curb line's moving out. So it's only going to be at the intersections, which wouldn't, wouldn't encroach upon any driveways.
So I know that just a lot of them, even the vision, had a lot of people, I many times drove those delineators different times a day. And it is very confusing when you have new changes. But a couple of questions too about the narrowing. When we want to become more of a biking city, is that going to be more, I mean, having narrow roads? Have, a lot of people have bigger vehicles to park. Does, do the roads have to be narrowed? Is it part of the requirements or can they remain the same?
Our, our city, city standard for this type of roadway is a 32 foot roadway and currently it's around 35 feet when I measure it. And so we would, we wouldn't want to promote a wider street, which then can promote higher speeds because people feel more comfortable, because it feels more open. So that's why we've developed the standard that we have today.
Are there any bike lanes looked at for this road?
We are, we are not adding bike facilities. It's not identified as, as a need in our active transportation plan on this specific street. However, there is the neighboring Cascade Creek Trail that people can use for walking and biking. That's very well connected into the, the downtown core and over towards Cascade Lake. So as well as people, people will still choose to ride on, on the street. Because it is, while, you know, we understand there's buses and other traffic, it, it is still a lower volume roadway when we think about our, you know, compared to other major streets. So some will still choose to bike on the street, but they have that option to use the cascade path.
Thanks, and then my last question from the resident who, this was kind of a, I don't want, I don't want to put the words in her mouth, but she didn't know that this was a possibility. And so I just want to ask about the public engagement. I mean, what kind of, you know, outreach and connections have you done to make sure that all residents thoroughly understand the implications of this?
We'll continue with mailers to the, to the neighborhood. You know, in addition to this assessment process, just the typical mailers we send out to make people aware of who the project contacts are, what to expect, where to get more information. We'll continue with that. We don't have a specific open house planned for this project per se, but we will continue with informational mailers to the neighborhood.
I know listening sessions are really important. My, my thought of, you know, like door to door, a lot of people don't see those mailers from my experience. So, but, but that's all my questions, thank you.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the item that we have in front of us.
With all four elements?
All four elements of project number J 7837.
All right, Councilmember Palmer, you have the floor.
No, I think that the Public Works has looked at this and has done a good job. I think that the speeding on the 7th Avenue should be taken care of somewhat. And I'm, I'm excited to see a, a speed study done prior and then afterwards to see how effective it was.
Thank you. I used to live on Hamlin Avenue in St. Paul and it was many of the same concerns, lots of buses, people speeding by. So I appreciate what you're experiencing and really value your feedback. It sounds like our staff are being responsive and, and thinking about some of the same issues that you are. My kids have gone to Washington and I bike along that trail all the time. So I'm in your neighborhood, I understand taking left onto 7th is a scary endeavor coming out of your neighborhood. So just appreciate that there are concerns, but also we're trying to do something to help manage those concerns while also improving our city utility and our city, meaning our taxpayers, are really covering the bulk of the cost. But there is a part of the project that goes to the homeowners. So that is how we do it, that's our policy and just appreciate you chipping in to make sure that that treat, that street is in really good shape. Councilmember Keen? Turn on your microphone, please.
Yeah, I just speak in support of what the motion is tonight. I think we're a couple of steps behind it, we're going to start preparing assessment rolls. I, I think the couple of things that are important here is that we are consistent, whether we're on North Broadway or a, a residential street or a commercial street that we try, we apply the same policies. We don't, we don't do things different because we're dealing with really expensive properties or, or really old properties or really new properties. We have consistency. And I think this is the other way we work towards design, the city design, so that we get these policies we want with slower neighborhood traffic. And I think these are the ways we contribute to that, slow and steady over a long period of time.
Would you just quickly mention the appeal process? Should there be a need?
So, so the next step in the, the assessment process, we'll send out a mailer with each individual assessment amount to each individual property owner, again, the property owner. And within that mailer will also include the, the steps for that appeal process as well as when the hearing is. So April 22nd, it's, it's, you know, the second meeting in April. And part of that process is residents, if they choose to object to the assessments, they need to put it in writing prior to or the evening of the hearing. And we collect that, then the residents have a certain number of days to file in district court. That objection, which then we follow a process through the court system essentially.
All right, thank you for that. Anybody else? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. All right, thank you everyone for speaking. We will move on to G5, which is the reconstruction of sections of 4th Avenue Southwest and 14th Street Southwest. Project number J 7845. And Mr. Dabrowski, we have you back for this one as well, go ahead.
All right, this is our, our next assess, and this is an assessment hearing. So as the, the items I was just describing for the previous hearing, we're here tonight at the assessment hearing to with the action requesting that the council adopt the, the resolution levying the proposed assessments as outlined in the assessment roll in your packet. And this is for the 4th Avenue Southwest and 14th Street Southwest project between 14th Street and 16th Street Southwest. Very similar project in that it's a complete reconstruction, including all the roadway and utilities underneath that roadway. So again, we presented this feasibility report a couple of months ago and then last month we conducted the project hearing, which you then set the assessment hearing for this evening. If people wish to object to their assessment, tonight is the night they, they need to do that in writing. I do understand the clerk has collected a number of those objections already. So she, we will, we will have that for the record. But if anyone else were to choose that hadn't and, and wanted to, tonight would be that opportunity and the last opportunity to do that. So with that, I would turn it over to you for opening the hearing and here to answer questions after that.
Thank you, Mr. Dabrowski, so we'll open the public hearing. I have one person signed up, Carolyn Van Sickle.
Good evening, Mayor Martin, President Carlson and members of the council. My name is Carolyn Van Sickle from 1527 4th Avenue Southwest. About 25 of my neighbors have trusted me to raise our concerns on this project. And we request further review of the project as it is currently written. We're not opposing it completely, we just have more questions. Those signatures as they said have been filed. We request additional information to help educate us on the substantial increase in project cost between what appear to be two similar residential reconstruction projects. We understand that the 16 and a half Street Northwest project done last year, summer 2023, is not an exact match to our project. But we do seek additional explanation for the striking increase of $612 per foot of road, which is an overall increase of $937,250,000 for a road that was done less than a year ago. Additionally, we ask for insight into the involvement of the STEM Academy with this project. The city's feasibility report names the STEM Academy as a business slash property owner with which RPU has been coordinating the planned construction. And they have a signed school entrance up at the head of 14th Street Southwest. Both Minnesota State Statute 429.051 and Rochester's assessment policy appear to allow further inclusion, but they are not on the current version of the assessment role. A brief summary of these questions and figures has also been delivered to the city clerk. We thank you for your consideration. We thank you very, very much for all of your help and all of your questions. And Public Works, we thank you too. We have been all over you guys with every question from the first road ever invented until now. And we do appreciate your time and we do want to find a way to make this project work for everybody. So tonight, what we ask is for the council to delay the vote on this request, so we may have more time to keep working with the city on resolving our concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item? Mr. Lund, come on up. Please introduce yourself and you've got five minutes.
Oh, I don't need five minutes, thanks Brooke. I just wonder if the council's aware that the STEM Academy, I believe, is going out of business? I think they declared bankruptcy and I, I believe it's closing down, is that incorrect?
I haven't heard that and that.
So it might result in a reassessment of the actual need for that or the value of the entire area. Because it's no longer going to be rented, apparently. That A through 12 segregated school is going away. I believe that's the information, it may affect the assessment of the property values in the area.
Thanks. Anyone else? We'll close the public hearing and ask for some staff response. Councilmember Palmer, did you need to direct staff?
The request for the neighborhood is to delay it. If we delayed it till the next meeting, is that a hardship on you or do we have to re-go out with advertising on the hearing?
We, we don't have to re-advertise any hearing because people have been notified. I would, I would recommend the council move forward with the project as planned. I'm not certain what a delay would help in this situation. We, the, the project need is there, we, we definitely have the utility needs and the roadway needs. And this, this street isn't going to, you know, the number of water main breaks that have been occurring over the years aren't magically going to go away. There, there is a need, we need to do the project. So I, I'm not certain why delaying would, what, what we would try to accomplish during that period.
Well, lis, listening to the neighbor, it was, it was just to get some answers. I don't think that they're, they're proposing that that's not a good project. I just think that they're, they have some questions and I didn't know if it's going to be, it has to be bid because we need to have it out by May 1st or what, but.
I mean, we need to, we like to get our projects out and started so we can ensure that they happen within the year. So if it gets delayed for two weeks and people want questions answered, I'm glad to answer questions. However, the, the, you know, request to utilize special assessments as a funding source, that, that won't go away because it is a way that we fund projects and it is, it is our policy when we're doing a full street reconstruction. The slight difference between this one and the one by Sunset Terrace is the one at Sunset Terrace did not have every driveway and the curb replaced on the south side where this project does include all of that. So that, that has a, a higher cost as compared to the Sunset Terrace project. So they're not quite, and not, and none of, every one of these street reconstruction projects is, is slightly different. So we're never going to get the, you know, exact same project and the exact same costs. They're all different and unique depending on, you know, this one, for instance, in our, in our soil borings that we took, there could be some poor soils. We may need to mitigate with some additional subgrade correction and rock to make sure that we, you know, the roadway holds up over the next 50 years and we don't start to see ravelling and rutting and settlement within the pavement. So those, those all get taken into account when completing a project and each project is unique in its own way.
Thank you.
Would you also explain why this STEM Academy is not included in the assessment roll?
Correct, because they're, they're addressed on 16th Street and take the, their main access off of 16th Street. So if, if we, if and when we do that 16th Street reconstruction, at that point in time, we would assess the STEM Academy property.
Other questions, Councilmember Keen?
I just want to go back to Councilmember Palmer's question. I think you answered that, like, we'd rather not do it, but is there like a cost benefit trade-off? Like if, if we, if, if there was a, a motion here to continue till April 1st, I'm just making that up. Would that be something you'd like say, if you did that, you expose us to not getting into the summer? Or is there any sort of like hard and fast problem with it or?
There, there wouldn't be any.
Is it a bad precedent?
April 8th is the next meeting.
Three weeks is not going to completely wreck the project schedule.
I'm asking, but I sort of agree with the staff that I don't know what would be done in those three weeks because we still have the next thing with, when we, we're, we've got the, some of the assessments challenged. And then we've got this idea that we still have to get the next line of bids to find out, to make, to make those numbers more real. And I, I think we're going to slow down that work if we don't get going now.
Yeah, I mean, we, RPU will, will be bidding this project. So, you know, we wouldn't be able to authorize our portion of the funding because this one is going to be RPU-driven, they'll do the contract. But we have a Public Works contribution that we need to bring back to the council to receive authorization to spend those funds, you know, once the project would, would get awarded by RPU. So we, we had tentatively scheduled to do that at the next meeting.
Okay, all right, based, based on what I understand, I, I would want to move to adopt the resolution levying the proposed assessments relating to reconstruction sections of 4th Avenue between, 14th Street, project number J 7845.
Second.
All right, Councilmember Keen, you have the floor.
The neighbors have been working very hard and, and with a lot of integrity to validate the goals of this project and the specific design points. They're working on what are the funding sources and what's the real value of a new street to a neighborhood? The, the neighbors want to know why this project stops at the school property as an example, or why the school does not cost share, this has come up. Why RPU can ask for a project, but then not cover the majority of the cost to kind of drive that back to Public Works or to the assessment roles. They want to know why their assessments per linear foot, again, are dramatically higher than when the city gave them a compare project. I mean, when you get down to the assessment level, it's a lot more. Public Works has explained that this is a much different project with, you know, the curbs and everything else. We can explain it, but it's still hard. As property values go up, we stay with the same percents of what an assessment is, but those assessments are getting really high. I mean, this is, there's homes on these streets that are getting $9,000 assessments. 7th Avenue had $9,000 assessments. These are things on, we know as a, we know we're staying within our rules of less than 3% of the assessed value of a property, but these are really big numbers. I think Public Works has worked through these issues and again, we, we, we've, the one up here set the policy to say, this is how we move forward to collect our roads. The city does use levy tax to pay for 75% of what's the city's part, but we use 25% from assessments. That's true whether you live on the road or don't live on the road. So when things get reduced on assessments, it goes more into levy. And that's just, that's just the, how, how things are going to have to be paid for. Based on the work done to, to date and the progress in the project, I, I do want to support this tonight and move forward. But I, I also want to challenge Public Works to be able to look at these things and some of the policies we have, like with the RPU cost sharing that reduces the street, the city, the streets funds, it reduces that, but it doesn't reduce assessments. I, I think that's something we could look at as a policy thing. But I think in the flow of our business, I want to get this thing moving so that we do work this summer. So we keep a cadence of our projects and not push everything out because we're not ready to act. Thanks.
Thanks, Councilmember Keen. Mr. Dabrowski?
I would like to add one note in that while currently the motion is to, to continue moving forward, we're available and I would gladly sit down and chat with residents and answer their questions. And would love them to just call and I can talk through and, and help to, you know, educate on, you know, how this has been developed and, and everything that will come with it, you know, including construction impacts like we talked about at the last hearing and everything that comes with construction.
Yeah, thank you.
Other comments, questions or comments? I guess I was feeling like if they've submitted a list of questions to the clerk to be answered, I, I would have been more comfortable continuing it to February, or April 8th, sorry. I guess I was feeling like if they've submitted a list of questions to the clerk to be answered, I, I would have been com- more comfortable continuing it to February or April eighth, sorry. Not sure why we're needing it to be pushed along for three weeks different of a request, but I don't make the motions. So Councilmember Dennis.
I think that is a good idea and definitely um all the work that went into doing that. So I would like to amend the motion to continue it until the April, what was it, meeting, April eighth, the April eighth meeting.
I'll second it.
For the reasons that the residents mentioned, there's questions unanswered and went through all the um work of preparing those. I think it just, our priority of having public engagements being um very important and citizens being comfortable with what's happening in their neighborhood. I think it's a very fair and reasonable request to postpone it.
Thank you, Councilmember Dennis. Councilmember Kirkpatrick?
Turn my microphone on. Is there a set of questions available right now that can be answered?
We're just taking a brief pause for the clerk to verify. Yep.
Council President Carlson, um uh Councilmember Kirkpatrick, uh the resident I was just speaking to did submit paperwork and she does have two questions here and I just wanted to verify with her that that's what she's wanting to get answered.
So then I can appreciate the motion to continue until April eighth, but if, if they're really asking for these questions to be answered, maybe we might have a try at those tonight. Dylan's eager. He's smiling.
Yeah, Clerk Lee Sler, I would request that you either hand them to Mr. Dabrowski or you read them.
Thanks, Kelly. All right, I'll read the questions. We request additional information to help educate us on the substantial increase in cost between these two similar residential reconstruction projects. We, while we understand that the sixteen and a half street northwest project done in twenty twenty-three is not an exact match to our project, we seek additional explanation for the striking increase of six hundred and twelve dollars per foot of road and overall cost increase of nine hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars, two hundred, nine hundred and thirty-seven thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars for a road rehabilitation in less than a year's time. So on that one, again, looking at the, the overall costs and the amount of work being completed as well as updating some of our unit pricing based on the construction estimates we've received and, and inflation um with, without doing a deep dive on every single item. This is currently our cost estimate for the project and uh they aren't quite similar, so that, that is part of the, the reasoning. So like I noted before, if the costs come in lower, which we'll know when we get bids, we would then in the end certify lower assessment amounts. Uh again, we can't promise that, but um it, it has happened. The other question was about the STEM Academy. We asked for the insight into the involvement of the academy. The city's report names the, the STEM Academy as a property owner with which RPU has been coordinating the construction and there's a signed school entrance. Both the statute and Rochester's assessment policy appear to allow for their inclusion, but they are not on the current version of the role. And I think I answered that earlier in noting that they take access from Sixteenth. It's their primary access as well as their address. So the policy would have us assessing them when we do a Sixteenth Street Southwest reconstruction project.
Thank you. Anything else that's relevant?
No, there was just some notes below, just referencing their research as to where they've, we're looking into the state statutes.
Okay.
And our policy.
Thank you. Uh Councilmember Kirkpatrick?
Thank you, Mr. Dabrowski, and also thank you to the resident who submitted those questions. I just want to note that I believe I asked you last time when we were continuing this hearing, those two properties at the north end of the block between Fourth Avenue and Third Avenue Southwest, just south of Fourteenth Street Southwest. I remember asking that property on the left there underneath the number fourteen, why that one wasn't being assessed and it's because the frontage or the address is actually not on Fourth Avenue Southwest. So even though STEM Academy, following that reasoning, Mr. Dabrowski, even though STEM Academy may utilize that um little stub of Fourteenth Street Southwest for access, their address and their frontage is really down on Sixteenth Street Southwest. So therefore, they wouldn't be assessed in this process despite them using Fourteenth Street. So um then I, then that would also follow that that property on the north, in other words, the northwest corner of Fourth Avenue Southwest and Fourteenth Street Southwest. That's why that one is being assessed because its frontage is on Fourth Avenue.
Fourteenth Street and we are, we are making improvements to those, all of those two properties on fourteen.
Got it.
Thank you. Okay, so there's a motion to continue to, to the meeting on April eighth. It sounds like the questions have been answered, so I'm not sure that that does add any value. Let's go ahead and vote on that motion to continue. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Okay, motion fails. We're back to the original motion to approve. Um any further discussion? Councilmember Keen?
Yeah, I just want to reiterate that there are some things still that, again, I, and I kind of been talking to uh Mr. Dabrowski about, like, as we get into the bids, and I think there will be continued coordination among this thing. Um and again, a last comment from the staff?
And I, I did find one additional that, uh thing of clear, point of clarification on the, the pricing. As noted before, we haven't broken out the utility share, so we're showing all of the street improvement costs right now as street, even though a portion of it will get picked up by the utilities. The numbers that are shown on this neighborhood research for the street rehabilitation were after we took all of the street costs that go to RPU sanitary sewer. So that's another reason why they look a lot lower. So when we bring this back for approval, the street number is going to be much lower as far as who's paying for what.
Well, that's great news. Thanks for that point of clarification. Okay. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you, everyone. All right, who's ready for G six? I think a few of you are. All right, so item G six is the former Lourdes High School landmark designation consideration. And we have Ms. Molly Patterson Lundgren here getting set up to present and she will start when she's ready. Anybody need the stretch break? Feel free to stand up. Wait until my PowerPoint shows up here. I think I've plugged in the right cord.
President Carlson, I moved to take a five-minute break because give everyone the chance to stretch before this next.
Okay, we will take a five-minute break and reconvene nine oh five on the dot.
Recording stopped.
Thanks for your time. All right, thank you for that. Uh we will get right back into it and Ms. Patterson Lundgren, go ahead.
Uh Council President Carlson, thank you, Mayor Norton, members of the council. Um here tonight to talk to you about um the property, which is the former Lourdes High School, Catholic High School here in the city of Rochester. The property is on the northwest corner of Sixth Avenue and Center Street and let's see, I'm going to try and use the pointer. I think most people, most folks know where it's located, but, you know, two blocks north of Second Street. Um it's on Sixth Avenue, so it's six blocks west of Broadway and then uh three to four blocks uh south of Civic Center Drive. When it was built uh in nineteen forty-one, um the Kotsky Park area, Kotsky Park neighborhood really um surrounded it more. Um but as the downtown has grown, um it has, basically is located in between the neighborhood and the downtown, right on the edge of those two neighborhoods. Um it was listed on our historic inventory, what we, we used to call our potential landmark list um back in twenty nineteen. And as a reminder, that list is a list of properties um that we have uh recognized we need to take a look at and decide whether or not um the city council chooses to designate those as historic landmarks. So its current status is that it's simply listed on that inventory. Uh the property was constructed in three different periods and I'll talk more about this. Um but basically started in nineteen forty-one. And the school vacated the property in twenty thirteen when their new um current high school was built um west of um, you know, western part of the city. Um the owner is Mayo Clinic and they have proposed um as part of their um bold forward unbound project to uh develop um a different facility at this location. They have indicated uh that they would like to demolish the building. Because it's on our inventory, that triggers us um a requirement for us to take it through and determine whether or not you, as the council, want to designate it as a historic landmark. So again, um three different periods of development uh for the school takes up the entire block. You can see in kind of that pinkish color um the nineteen forty-one section, which is that original section of building. Nineteen fifty-eight addition, which was much smaller. Um those were all classrooms and then the nineteen eighty-six um had a larger gym that was added as well as classrooms and I believe offices as well. So their first kind of thing that we look at when we decide whether or not a property um should be landmarked is we look at the criteria and we talk about this in terms of historic significance, right? Why is it important to the community? So um there's two criteria that we're going to talk about tonight for this property. And one is criteria number one, which you've got um up on the screen right now. So it's related to um the character um and development of the city. And indeed, even patterns of development. The owner is Mayo Clinic and they have proposed as part of their Bold Forward Unbound project to develop a different facility at this location. They have indicated that they would like to demolish the building. Because it's on our inventory, that triggers us a requirement for us to take it through and determine whether or not you as the council want to designate it as a historic landmark. So again, three different periods of development for the school takes up the entire block. You can see in kind of that pinkish color, the 1941 section, which is that original section of building. 1958 addition, which was much smaller. Those were all classrooms and then the 1986 had a larger gym that was added as well as classrooms and I believe offices as well. So the first kind of thing that we look at when we decide whether or not a property should be landmarked is we look at the criteria and we talk about this in terms of historic significance, right? Why is it important to the community? So there's two criteria that we're going to talk about tonight for this property. And one is criteria number one, which you've got up on the screen right now. So it's related to the character and development of the city and indeed even patterns of development in the state and across the country. So it's really about the growth of Rochester in mid to late 20th century, 1941 up through when it ceased to be a school. So the packet goes into much more detail and a study that was provided by the property owner completed by historic consultants who meet Secretary of Interior Standards for professional historians and architectural historians provided that, property owner Mayo Clinic provided that to us. And then I used that to do my own evaluation of the property. We both agree, both the consultants and I agree that it does meet this criteria for historic significance. In terms of historic integrity, and I actually have broken this up by each slide because when you look at historic integrity, you also consider the criteria that you're looking at. So in relation to its historic significance of that 20th century development, it does have historic integrity sufficient to to list the property, to designate the property. But that is somewhat diminished by the additions, in particular the 1986 edition, which is less than 100, sorry, is less than 50 years old. So yes, it has historic integrity, but it is somewhat diminished because of that large addition. The other criteria that we're going to look at tonight is criteria number five, its embodiment of distinguishing characteristics of architectural style, period, form, or treatment. And this is what kind of is, you know, just at its face value, when you drive by, when you walk by the building, you can see that it has this distinctive architectural style. It's part of the Gothic Revival style. In particular, this is collegiate Gothic, Gothic Revival. And the packet kind of points out more detail in the slide shows you the different types of features architecturally that this property exhibits, which make it meet this criteria. Again, criteria five, as is criteria one, it's about why, why this property may be considered historically significant to the community. For the historic integrity, it does have historic integrity. But it is somewhat diminished by the, by the additions, right, which cover up the other facades of the 1941 building. So again, property owner has indicated they wish to demolish the property. That requires us as a city to consider whether or not to landmark, which is what you're deciding tonight. And a part of that process, of course, also is that that goes before the Heritage Preservation Commission. And they also held a public hearing. So at the public hearing, the Heritage Preservation Commission chose to recommend only the 1941 portion of the property for landmark designation. They did cite both criteria one and five. So it, they see it still as, you know, part of that historic significance in terms of development of the city related to the growth of education and the changes that were needed over time, which, which required the additions. And then also, of course, criteria number five for its architectural value. So we're recommending that you consider two alternatives. Either follow the recommendation of the Heritage Preservation Commission for the designation of the 1941 section of the former Lourdes School Building. And if you choose to do that, you'll also want to direct the city attorney to prepare the ordinance for, for final adoption of that. Or you may want to consider removal of the former Lourdes High School from the historic inventory. If you choose that, that will happen after your decision tonight. And then once the property owner submits a demolition permit, that would allow city teammates to sign off on that when they do, when they do come forward for that. If you choose to remove it, there's basically, you know, three different reasons that the ordinance specifies. One is to reconsider historic significance, right? So that's the eight different criteria and we're you know, we're, what I went over tonight is criteria number one and criteria number five. Or reconsider its historic integrity, which I went over for both of those criteria. And the third option is to consider economic hardship. That that language is detailed in your packet. And the property owner through the process is allowed to bring that information to you and to request that request approval of demolition, removal of the property from the inventory. So the demolition would be, would be approved when they're ready for that. And I guess at that, I'm going to stop, let them do their proposal and then it can be available for additional questions.
Okay. I'd like to, I'd like to invite the Mayo team up. And please introduce your team and you have 10 minutes.
Good evening. Council President Carlson, Mayor Norton, council members. My name is Katie Arnt. I'm an anesthesiologist and a member of our Bold Forward Unbound leadership team. I'm here with Anita Lemon, a historic architect from Miller Dunwitty and Doug Holton, Mayo Clinic's Chair of Facilities and Support Services. We are here this evening to respectfully ask that the former Lourdes High School building not be designated as a local landmark. Tonight we'll focus on three key points. One, we believe that after careful review by a team of historic architects, that the determination of historic significance is limited and narrow and does not meet the high level of significance to qualify for local designation. Two, we will share why reuse of the current structure is not viable and highlight the value and innovations of our proposed state-of-the-art facility and its importance to the Bold Forward Unbound in Rochester Vision. And three, we will discuss how we will honor the history of the site with exterior artifacts in a park on the west side of the site. I will now turn it over to historic architect Anita Lemon, who led the evaluation study of the site.
Good evening. I hope you can hear me okay. I'm a principal and historic architect overseeing our historic market sector. As a historic architect, as Molly mentioned, I met, I meet the credentials as determined by the Secretary of Interiors to oversee the assessment of historic buildings. During my career, I have completed work on over 100 historic properties. The determination of eligibility report in your packet, completed by our team, including Hesroyce, concluded that the building, specifically the 1941 building with 1958 addition met only one of the eight local designation criteria for historic significance. Namely, as a representative of mid-century trends in local parochial educational institutions. The significance of which was lessened when the building was determined obsolete for continued use as a high school. The point, the report points out that the building does not meet any of the other seven criteria. The, as noted by staff, specifically the 1941 building does have characteristics associated with collegiate Gothic, a common style used for education and religious buildings during this period. Similar to St. Francis Church, only a few miles away. All buildings have a style. The style of this building does not make it more significant. And one of the most significant character finding features, the stained glass windows were removed and repurposed for the new Lawrence High School prior to Mayo taking ownership. The stone detailing is typical for buildings of this period in type. While we don't believe that this building reaches the standard for historic significance, it is worth pointing out that Mayo Clinic has diligently preserved several iconic buildings that remain integral to its campus and this community. These structures stand as enduring testaments to Mayo's legacies, to Mayo Clinic's legacy and commitment to excellence. Among the nationally recognized Mayo Clinic historic buildings are the Mitchell Student Center, the 1918 Foundation House, the Maywood Mansion, and the 1927 Plumber Building. Mayo Clinic has made a significant investment in preserving and adapting these historic buildings using time honored preservation techniques, including adaptive reuse of historic pieces in order to keep these buildings vital and significant to the community. The organization has also employed gifted craftspeople such as masons and painters to painstakingly restore historic elements. I will now turn it over to Doug Holton to discuss the challenges to the site.
Thank you, Anita. Healthcare is dynamic and ever-changing, requiring new facilities that can accommodate new technologies and patient care models to meet the needs of our patients and staff now into the future. Buildings that were once state-of-the-art can no longer effectively meet the changing needs of our patients and staff. Similarly, it was determined that the former Lourdes High School was no longer able to meet the needs of its students and staff. At the time we purchased the site in 2013, it was estimated that it would cost 12 to 15 million dollars to bring it to a minimal usable level. The site has now become a critical site for Bold Forward Unbound in Rochester, Mayo's planned $5 billion investment in setting the course for the future of healthcare. The planned state-of-the-art logistics center is crucial to achieving the transformation of healthcare envisioned by Bold Forward Unbound in Rochester. As we contemplated our needs, the design team, which consists of architects, engineers, and other experts, assessed the feasibility of incorporating the existing facade into the new structure. After due diligence, it was determined that that was not viable for the following reasons. The small footprint of the current structure did not allow for reuse. As you can see in the drawing, the proposed building footprint is mostly outside the current building. The floor-to-floor heights of the new building do not line up with the existing building. Again, as you can see in the photo, by the fire escape, the ground floor is partially above grade. The proposed tunnels connecting the new clinical buildings to the site on the southeast corner would run, run straight through the existing foundation wall, which would undermine the integrity of the building. Finally, the structure is not flexible to allow us to accommodate the technology and important components that make this facility an integral part of our overall Bold Forward Unbound in Rochester vision. Bottom line, the following, following an assessment, we believe there is not a viable reuse for the existing structure. Mayo Clinic is redesigning the site to enable an even more transformational and connected campus that supports the needs of our patients and our staff. The logistics center planned for the site will house several support services that are essential to providing world-class patient care in the new clinical buildings. This building will include over 10 multidisciplinary departments that are critical to meeting the needs of our patients and staff. This facility will enable Mayo Clinic to house critical supplies nearby, ensuring that patient care areas are maximized for patients and staff use. We will integrate the latest robotics and automation technologies in this new facility, including predicting and automatically delivering supplies where they're needed in the new spaces. By stocking supplies off-site and infusing robotics and automation technologies in this new facility, Mayo also aims to improve staff experience by automating repetitive tasks, reduce the risk of health-associated injuries, making our clinical space safer for everyone, and finally introducing more sustainable practices for everyday processes such as using automation to reduce the amount of water, chemicals needed for cleaning and sterilizing, reducing our environmental impact. I will now turn the presentation back to Dr. Arnt to discuss our plans to honor the facility, honor the site, excuse me.
Thank you, Doug.
We are so excited about what Bold Forward Unbound in Rochester will mean for our patients, staff, and the community. It will enhance the economic vitality of the region and state, ensuring Mayo Clinic continues to provide the world's best care to patients who rely on us here and across the globe. The logistics center is critical to achieving the vision put forward by Bold Forward Unbound in Rochester. As a physician at Mayo, I am proud of how we keep our patients at the center of everything we do. Transforming the former Lourdes site will allow us as staff to more efficiently and seamlessly get the items we need to care for our patients. While we look to the future, we also want to honor the past. Many LHS alumni are members of our community and staff and we understand that the site has meaning to many. While we do not believe the full 1941 structure should be designated a landmark, we recognize that there are exterior artifacts that should be preserved and have new life. Mayo Clinic is committed to honoring the site by incorporating exterior artifacts from the 1941 portion of the building into a 30-foot park with benches along the west side as part of the redevelopment. This site will serve as a pocket park at the edge of Mayo's downtown campus and will lead into the neighborhood to the west. Additionally, we plan to remove the cross atop the 1941 portion and have it installed at the new Diocese of Winona Rochester Pastoral Center, currently under construction. Last year, Mayo Clinic's longest-serving staff member, Sister Lauren, passed away. She was 101, almost 102. Before she passed, she wrote a beautiful farewell letter to the Mayo Clinic staff to share her insights after nearly 70 years of service. She wrote, "My wish for you is that you leave this place of hope and healing better than you found it as you pass it to the next generation. The work is never finished. We are continually called to change, to innovate, and to improve patient care. That's why we are here this evening to request that you allow us to create the spaces that will allow us to change, to innovate, and to improve patient care." In summary, we respectfully request that you do not designate this site as a local landmark and allow us to bring it back to life as a fully integrated functioning aspect of our new campus. And we can honor the past with park space where residents and visitors can learn about the history of the site and the Catholic community that helped build Mayo Clinic in Rochester. Thank you.
Thank you so much. So I will go ahead and open the public hearing. I'll let Ilya clear the We have several people signed up, but I will also be sure to call on others if you didn't have a chance to sign up. So first one is Chris Allen. I'll just call on you. So same rules, please introduce yourself and you have five minutes.
Okay, thank you. My name is Chris Allen. I'm a resident of Rochester, Minnesota right now. I had to condense 13 pages of written passionate words to one. So here it goes. Lourdes High School is in downtown Rochester, is being eyeed to be taken down. It's been neglected for the past 10 years. It has happened to most of the beloved buildings in downtown Rochester, save for a tender few of them scattered here and there, Historic Third Street being one of them. Downtown is a place to come and build community. When you were a student at Lourdes, I was a student at Lourdes, class of 1977, along with Sean Palmer and Kitty Ryan, who's here as well. When you went to school there, you ran into other families you knew, you went to a basketball game, you played theater, you played sports, you were part of the theater plays, and you were part of the cheerleaders for all the different sports that we had. It was a place where you made a new friend, maybe for life, a slender tendril of friendship that sometimes worked out and sometimes didn't. I came to Lourdes my junior year from Gethersburg, Maryland. I was the class of 1977. My dad worked for IBM, which stands for I've Been Moved. Lots of IBM kids totally got, got it and embraced me as a new cool kid. I wasn't though. I was so awkward. I thought I was the only awkward one there because I liked art. My folks encouraged this when we lived in Washington DC because every other Saturday we would go to the free museums and then share a picnic lunch that my mom had prepared on the mall. "Which painting would you bring home if you could?" my mom would ask each of us, my three sisters, myself and the two sisters. It was a different painting for each of us. That question encouraged me to be an artist as a profession and that's where I am today. I was a good student at Lourdes, very goody-two-shoes, if you will. I loved hanging out at the library with the stained glass windows pouring in their colored light. I never in my life had a mod for God class before moving to Lourdes High School. Sister Marie, the math teacher scolded me in front of everyone when I made the sign of the cross with my left hand. But sweet, tiny Sister Flora loved me. I loved to draw and make stuff and she ate it up. She made diminutive paintings of the head of Christ. She had a message and believed it and she made me believe it too. I was not going to Catholic school prior to this, more than going to church kind of belief. I loved her back so much. She got me a $500 scholarship to attend the Art Department at St. Teresa's in Winona. I don't even know how much tuition was in those days, but my father could afford it. I thought art therapy would suit me and they had a program. My parents were happy about the scholarship and we didn't My parents were happy about the scholarship, and we didn't even consider another school. That spring of my senior year, knowing that I was soon on my way, my high school principal, Mr. Cashman, gave me his permission to walk down to the clinic, to the Gonda Building, to see the art over a mod or two. 20 to 30, 20 to 30 to 40 minutes, depending on how much time I had. I would go over about once a week, and I would always ask if it was okay with him. I'd sit in the lobbies of the different floors, just gasping at all the beauty. Sometimes I made drawings. Sometimes I just sat as close to the art as I could to figure out technique and content. Every once in a while, I would sit next to someone that was crying, scared and lonely in a town where they did not even know one soul. A young girl in a modest Navy Catholic uniform comforting a perfect stranger. That must have been odd for others to see, but I felt I was doing important work, the way my teachers were helping me learn. Does sitting alone still happen in our downtown? I'm afraid to say it might. Do the people that come here to work, maybe for years, but also maybe just for a semester or two as a student, feel welcomed and embraced? How about our temporary visitors here for the clinic, wandering alone downtown on weekends with the clinic when the clinic is closed? A neutral space is needed, again, in the middle of our downtown. A community center to gather old and new, healthy and mending, rich and poor, every walk of life. Please do not tear down Lourdes High School for another isolating spot where outsiders and locals cannot connect.
It's time to wrap up, Ms. Allen.
What's that?
It's time.
I have just a little bit more. All three buildings should be saved. There's something in agriculture called corn, squash, and beans. The three plants are stronger together. Why am I so passionate about down Lawrence?
I'm sorry.
I'm just gonna say because my mother was the founder of Channel One. I come from stock here that really cares.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate your time. We just have many people signed up and need to respect others. Thank you. All right, I have John Kresel next.
Madam President, Members of the Council, Mayor Norton, John Kresel. At the HPC meeting in February 2019, Mayo paid for the consultants who recommended landmarking two parts of the Lourdes building. One of them, I believe, is here this evening. I didn't quite catch your name. I couldn't hear you that well, but I believe initially you were one that supported this. One of the questions that come to my mind, what has changed since your initial statement and findings? Because I understand that you are an authority in this particular endeavor. At that meeting, the Mayo representatives specifically recommended going ahead with landmarking the oldest section of Lourdes. Since Mayo took over the Lourdes building, only recently has Mayo ever said they intended to destroy it. Landmarking and encouragement by Mayo implies just the opposite. On two different, with two different independent consultants, the State Historical Preservation Office and the HPC staff, said it was eligible for landmarking, and no expert has ever said the opposite until this evening. Also, while the HPC final vote on landmarking was four to three, that was because two of the commissioners wanted the 1941 and the 14, the 1958 building to be representative as landmark status. That was not indicated, I don't think, on the report, maybe in your findings and your packet or this evening with the presentation. So it's important to remember that there was only one person that abstained from, didn't abstain from voting, but said that the owner should have the right to do whatever they want to do. So therefore, the six of the HPC commissioners recommended landmarking. Doug Holton mentioned that the existing footprint is too small. Could it be of benefit to Mayo's with this project to provide the street to the north by the city of Rochester, the north of Lourdes, to provide additional space? I saw where that corridor was for the underground trolley, so to speak, but I just want to hear from the Mayo rep, maybe from Doug, whether that's a possibility if that land to the north were provided to Mayo? Because they also have the empty block to the north for future expansion, if that would make a difference. Thank you very much for consideration and your time.
Thank you, Mr. Kresel. Joe Christensen.
Good evening. I'm Joe Christensen. I'm a graduate of Lourdes High School also, and I think that it is a beautiful building, and it was designated a historical preservation site at one time for a reason. And I think that, you know, this $5 billion expansion is a big reason why people don't want to combat them on this, you know? We want that big investment into our town, you know, our construction jobs here. We don't want to see it go to Jacksonville, Florida, or Scottsdale, Arizona. We want it here. I wish there was other options or locations that I could consider more, because Lourdes is not just a historical landmark because of the architecture or when it was made, but it's also a cultural landmark because the people and the memories who went there. And some of the loyalty that people have to the community is based on possibly the landmarks and the buildings and the memories that those bring back. So you take down those memories, well, you kind of lose that, if that makes any sense. You know, for about 40 years, there was an idea that people in Rochester had about Mayo Clinic possibly connecting the St. Mary's Campus with the downtown campus. I know that's not in the concept drawing. I mean, in that concept drawing, it almost looks like they're going to take down St. St. John's, I think. No, okay. But, you know, I wish there was other options that they would possibly entertain. And I mean, I know it's not on this exact topic, but if you're trying to convince people that there's other options, maybe could possibly provide other options. I think that downtown Central High School was beautiful. I wish I could have repurposed that. Same thing with the old Rochester High School, if they, I wish they could have preserved that, you know, because once you take down the history, it's gone. So far, I have not really heard a real convincing use of this new $5 billion complex. I definitely want the construction and the investments here. I just haven't heard that we need to build like a proton facility. Okay, that makes sense. If I would say that there's a need for our medical field right now, it is our aging baby boomer population. We don't have enough nursing homes. Not saying that you should build a nursing home here, but there's other areas that could possibly be looked at. Mick Jagger is 80 years old.
Can we stay on the topic of Lourdes, please?
Okay, sure. So that's an option. Got it. Two minutes and 38 seconds. I think that's good enough. Thank you.
Thank you. Ryan Parsons.
Good evening, Council President Carlson, Mayor Norton, and members of the City Council. My name is Ryan Parsons, and I'm president of the Rochester Area Chamber of Commerce. The Rochester Area Chamber of Commerce urges you not to proceed with landmark designation of the former Lourdes High School. As part of Mayo Clinic's five-year plan presented in October 2023, the demolition and redevelopment of the former Lourdes site was noted as a future location of a state-of-the-art logistics facility that will serve as a circulatory system for Bold Forward Unbound clinical buildings and to improve patient care moving forward. This investment and growth in our community is threatened by a narrow and limited determination of applying a landmark designation to the location. The removal of the historic inventory of the former Lourdes High School is warranted under UDC guidelines. The site has a lack of historical significance and integrity, which is showcased in both the Historic Landmark Eligibility Review and the December 2023 Determination of Eligibility Report. These reports found that while the site help tells the story of private Catholic education, it is without, is not within a landmark district, and is not representative of architectural innovation, among other factors. Given the minimal qualifications as a historic landmark to proceed with a landmark designation of the former Lourdes High School would not only impact the proposed transformational development through Bold Forward Unbound, but it would also set a dangerous precedent that can negatively impact future investment here in Rochester. Furthermore, the UDC guidelines are clear, as property may be removed from landmark designation. If the owner believes the cost of upkeep and repairs outweigh a building's economic potential, the costs needed to remediate the former Lourdes High School, an estimated $16 million when adjusted for inflation, is over double the estimated value of both the building and the land. The cost alone to remediate the outdated, unsafe, and non-accessible space, which would not account for its expected use in Mayo Clinic's five-year plan, render a clear economic hardship as noted in the UDC guidelines. The former Lourdes High School has tremendous potential to be a part of a historic investment in Rochester by Mayo Clinic. Their over $5 billion Bold Forward Unbound plans will improve patient care and will usher in an economic boom here in our community and transform Rochester for the better. It is not in the best interest of Rochester to designate the former Lourdes High School as a landmark, and we urge you to not proceed with landmark designation of the former Lourdes High School. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parsons. Barb Hudson.
Hi, I'm Barb Hudson. Let me just clarify for you. The, what it means to be historically significant and historically landmark status. I had the privilege of being a Heritage Preservation Commissioner. And I do know, and you have heard from Molly, that it does meet landmark status. I was a Historic Preservation Commissioner on the commission when Mayo came to the commission in January of 2019. I met with Erin Sexton, the Director of Community Engagement for Mayo Clinic. I met with Tim Siegfried, the Division Chair with Mayo Facilities. And I met with Charlene Rosie, President and co-founder of Hess and Rosio, the Historical Consulting Committee hired by Mayo. At that meeting with the Historic Preservation Committee, they agreed with the State Historic Preservation Commission from the state, and they agreed with our city urban design and historic preservation person, which is Molly Patterson Lundgren. And they agreed with the commissioners that the, all these people met, and they agreed that the 40, the 1941 building of, of the place that we're discussing tonight did meet the criteria for historic significance, and it met that criteria. So what you just heard from the previous speaker was incorrect. He said it didn't meet the criteria. It does meet that criteria. So when the discussion ended during that meeting, the criteria was met based on state and federal criteria. It met the Mayo's historic consulting firm's criteria. It met city staff criteria. It met the HPC criteria then and now. We just got the most current criteria met by SHPO again and by the HPC, as you just heard Molly say. So based on that criteria alone, it does meet historic preservation to be landmark. So based on that, it does meet the historic preservation guidelines to be landmarked tonight if you so choose. The historic landmark cannot be changed. The Mayo plans for that site can be changed. Mayo says that it is, they can claim financial hardship to pay for a new design and for upkeep of the building. I seriously say that that is a, something that they have money to change the plan. When they met with us in 2019, they said that they were able to work with us and do whatever it takes to historically landmark that building, but since now that they've made a plan, they don't want to change it, so they're using loopholes with that. So I am asking you to save our legacy, the physical legacy of this unique part of our community, and to us, it is a big, unique form of our community. Please support landmark status. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hudson. That is it, who I have signed up on my list, so if others have comments, and we do encourage you to not duplicate what's already been said, but Mr. Lund, come on up. Mr. Westlund. You can come first, Westlund, and then Kevin Lund can come next.
I'll be an easy act to follow, Judge. They'll be throwing all their fruit at me.
Let's keep it respectful, please. Thanks.
Little levity. We're just talking about the history of a building after all, and the Mayo Clinic needs another parking lot. How much is enough? This is the document that I handed that's been mentioned by two other speakers tonight is the HPC document, and I gave that to Heidi earlier. I gave her a copy of that to remind you of that February 2019 meeting. It's, there's, the minutes are there, and Mayo did pay a consultant, and this was twice, who recommended landmarking the building. I'm trying not to repeat other people, but they're kind of... How much can you say about Lourdes? It's not just a building. It's people's historical memories of a place that's being destroyed here. It's not just a property as assessed by cold, rational mathematicians and expert architects who clearly know more about appearances than I do of buildings that are important or historically significant or not significant, but imminently more valuable than a parking lot. I live just a few blocks away from Mayo Clinic, and I, you know, I could stand to drop a few pounds. My health is my own problem in a lot of cases, but I don't benefit at all from having Mayo Clinic in this town. When I walk by Lourdes, and I'm not a Catholic, but I'm trying to be one, actually, because they have a respect and reverence for tradition that's lacked and sorely lacking in our world today. And that building, it is, it's not, I mean, I've been in Gothic cathedrals. I've been in Chart, Lourdes. I've been to Mont Saint Michel. I've been to the Exeter and Wells. It's cheap by comparison. I've been to Oxford's cathedrals and Cambridge cathedrals. Well, they're Anglican, they're not Catholic, but you know how that worked out. But it's politics that's bringing this building down. It's politics that's bringing down the edifice of Western civilization. We must turn that building to some good use. We have to find a way. Mayo Clinic recommended that it be set aside for its historical significance, and especially that 1940, 41 portion of the building, and then the 1958 building, there was 44 and 58. But yeah, the third part was a little bit cheap, but times had changed, and people weren't making beautiful buildings so much anymore. But the historical significance of it, there were 2019 documents, the minutes with the consultants' reports, the package was sent to the council and the public. This is kind of touching on the landmarking issue of Central Park, of the, not the Central Park over here, but the Silver Lake Park, in that the two are similar because it, the common feature here is that staff may not be communicating properly with either the council members themselves, who are our elected representatives, or the public in terms of asking for an advisory commission to talk about putting the Lourdes facility, the building, to some other use. I could understand what that guy was saying about... I could understand what that guy was saying about Mick Jagger's turning 80. There are million, multimillion-dollar pop stars who are going to want places to be taught. Okay, narrow it back down, because we need to consult, we need to think inside the box, right? Inside the box. A parking lot is imminently more valuable than a medical museum or historical society right downtown, or a nursing home, or affordable housing, or some of the new arrivals in Rochester. Whatever we put the building to, the documents were presented, it should be a historical society, and I don't think Mayo Clinic needs any more space in this town. We have a monolithic monoculture. It is a coal-mining town, isn't it? At the end of the day, we're just a coal-mining town. You know that reference? And that is what, yeah, and I've got 10 seconds, and that's my time, Brooke.
Wrap it up, let's go.
Yeah, wrap it up, let's go. Shut up, Wes. Tear the building down. Go ahead.
No.
That was sarcasm.
Yeah. All right. Kevin Lund.
President Carlson, members of the City Council, Mayor Norton, City Administrator Zales. Good evening, I'm Kevin Lund. To begin, any implication by the Mayo Clinic administration that they have been a responsible steward of Rochester's history, not their history, is false. The clinic's disregard for our collective history is currently on full display in its facilities' expansion project that has been years in the making. To now insist we destroy an historic building meticulously designed and constructed the last hundreds of years and sprinkle its remnants, its ashes into some pocket part frankly is condescending. Ultimately, who owns this property and its intended utilization, whether it's Bold Forward Unbound, whatever, is irrelevant in applying the landmark designation ordinance factors. What is relevant is the building's relationship and importance to our community. Critically, its historic lineage dates to one of the founders of the Mayo Clinic, Mother Mary Alfred Moes. You're aware Lourdes was placed on the historic inventory five years ago, and the inclusion of the 1941 building was embraced by the team from Mayo. Absolutely nothing has changed to either remove it from the inventory or fail to landmark it. Three independent thorough professional assessments, one conducted by a Mayo-retained experts, have concluded as a landmark, local and arguably national landmark. All of the information studied, collected, and presented to you is irrefutable evidence that the 1941 Lourdes High School has excellent integrity of location, superb workmanship reflected in the bas-relief sculptural panels typical of Gothic revival architecture, which radiates the aesthetic and historic sense of mid-20th century religious institutional use. We don't have another building like it, and we never will. Demolition is forever. Furthermore, it clearly meets two of the ordinance criteria and only needs to meet one, and there's no bar that we need to exceed, some high bar, that's not the ordinance. Criteria one, its character, interest, or value is part of the development heritage or cultural characteristics of Rochester. The story of this building tells the story of private Catholic education and its role in our community from just prior to World War II up until the 2010s. The choice of architectural style reflects an intent to provide a quality educational experience to Rochester's Catholic youth, myself included. Criteria five, its embodiment of distinguishing characteristics of an architectural style. Collegiate Gothic design features invoke thoughts of European medieval castles, cathedrals, and East Coast Ivy League schools. The original 1941 section is a strong representation of this style, along with the revered National Register 1939 Harold Crawford-designed Old Rochester Public Library, the Mitchell Student Center. I would remind those who don't remember, the clinic was on the verge of demolishing this building in the mid-1970s. Critically, according to our State Historic Preservation Office, the building is eligible for the National Register under Criterion A and Rochester Landmark under Criterion One. Quote, "Sisters from the Order of St. Francis started Rochester's Catholic school system, and were the driving forces in the formation of our dominant industry, medicine. For the clinic to destroy their and our remarkable legacy reflected in this fortress-like educational cathedral is entirely avoidable. Public policy considerations can be accomplished simultaneously if you decide not to buckle under the weight of the Mayo Clinic's wealth, influence, and unelected power. By demolishing the 1958 and mid-1980s portion of Lourdes, possibly vacating a portion of First Street Northwest, and utilizing the surface parking lot a half a block to the north, the logistics center, the loading dock, could easily be repositioned. This would allow the original 1941 portion of Lourdes to be saved, revitalized, and repurposed for theoretically the greater good, something I'm confident Mother Moes would have advocated for." Now, that would be bold and transformative. Choosing not to landmark, given the overwhelming and unrefuted facts, will suggest sadly that our heritage preservation law does not apply to Mayo. There is simply no justification for further scrubbing our Franciscan legacy and the architectural significance embodied in the historic 1941 Lourdes High School from the soul of Rochester. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, any other, nope. I'm sorry, we do not, we do not clap in council chambers. Are there any other speakers? Come on up. Please introduce yourself, and you have five minutes.
This is the mic. Council President Carlson, council members, Mayor Norton, City Administrator Zales, and council people. My name is Christine Schultz, and I've not spoken before council since 2021 when I stepped down as Heritage Preservation Commission Chair. I'm here because the old Lord's High School is the closest, oldest, extant community education building in Rochester's historic center. It's been described beautifully by others, I will not do that. Its historic integrity and its significance have been described. Old Lourdes is significant in both Mayo and Rochester's physical and cultural histories, a local school close to many of the parents' workplace, a booming national healthcare center. I'd like to focus us on a background which hasn't been discussed tonight. The council has been working hard diligently to consistently implement long-range planning goals, and I commend you on that. I'd like to look at Lourdes in that context, rather than in the context of a logistics center. A programming need for Mayo's innovation and growth, yes, we know that. It's needed, but it's not absolutely needed on that block. In 2013, with council adoption of a preservation ordinance and the creation of the Preservation Commission, Rochester added heritage and adaptive reuse to its planning tools for the first time, only in 2013. It's astounding. In 2015, following DMCC Board's April approval of the Destination Medical Center Development Plan, integrating the new with the old, the smaller scale with the larger, to create resilient, innovating urban environments, was supported within that very DMCC plan. And I could reference that, but again, you don't need all those details, I would be glad to provide it if you would like it. So both the city plans and the DMCC plans recognize the integral importance of retaining history to have a resilient urban environment. Lourdes was initially reviewed by HPC in February 2019, and many people have covered that. Mayo's Tim Siegfried and Charlene Royce of Hess and Royce was the heritage consultant who spoke for Mayo's integrity and significance at that time. In the years since then, community development hired a planner skilled in urban design and heritage planning, recognizing that this was an essential part of our city, and based on local importance and landmark designation. That person was Molly Patterson Lundgren, who is with us tonight, and the intention was to work closely with the city and with Mayo Clinic as an urban anchor in Rochester's urban context to retain heritage. Designation of Lourdes will open a dynamic and long-delayed opportunity for Mayo and the city to join, based on local importance and landmark designation, in supporting heritage with retention of old Lourdes, and adaptive repurposing, restoration, and integration of current and future uses, all within Bold Forward Growth. To manage the old and the new on the block, as with the Mitchell Student Center, which Judge Lund mentioned, south of Second Street Southwest, rather than demolishing for full block development. Mayo has done non-full block development on other blocks, and it has worked. The logistics center could go north, as has been described, or elsewhere. Again, I'm not familiar with the programming on that. And Lourdes, if this is done, will continue a treasured Mayo tradition of incorporating old, significant buildings with their growth. Council and mayor, please, take this opportunity to designate the 1941 Old Lourdes High School as a local landmark, honor the heritage of both the city and Mayo, and encourage centuries-long use of buildings. Mayo, I would address you too, and Dr. Farugia, the board and facilities. As with the Mitchell Student Center, now housing the Alex School of Medicine, I look forward to your adaptive and continuing your use of old Lourdes and your integration of another beloved landmark within your campus. Thank you, elected officials and staff and Mayo, for your work.
Thank you, Ms. Schultz. Anyone else like to speak? Hold on, Mr. Aishen, come on up. Please introduce yourself, you have five minutes.
I'm Chris Will, I live in Rochester. I have 24 years in the construction industry, I'm an electrician here in town, and just wanted to touch on a few points about the economical hardship. In my experience, the further you get to downtown, I can look at a map and the infrastructure, the stuff that actually makes a building work is going to be deteriorating the closer you get to downtown. Buildings like this, also, I have to look out for mold, I have to look out for asbestos, especially. It's very hard to give a customer like a spot-on bid or a quote to work on a building like this. And I know Mayo had highlighted, but I'd also like to just reiterate their efforts and commitment to historical buildings. The Plummer, Assisi Heights, St. Mary's, Maywood Mansion, the Foundation House, I mean, the amount of resources they've put in to preserving history is, should really be highlighted. That's all I got, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Will. Mr. Aishen, come on up.
President Carlson, City Council, Mayor Norton. My name is John Aishen, I live here in Rochester, and I'm a 1986 Lourdes alumni. Great memories of Lourdes. Favorite memory, walking in, seeing that cute freshman girl from St. John's, I was from St. Pius. Later that year, getting in trouble with that same girl, passing notes in Sister Rosemary's algebra class. Drifting apart, later being senior prom dates, and then later on marrying her. Wonderful memories of Lourdes. But we have to look at the ordinance, and let's ignore the fact who owns that building right now, right? The ordinance says removal is, can be from financial challenges. So again, ignoring who the owner is, when we're talking about affordable housing, then if somebody wanted to change that into an apartment unit. The financial burden of picking and choosing what parts of a building and requiring construction around that, I would be very, very careful about setting that precedent. It may happen again. So for those reasons, I think you should remove it from landmark status. Thank you.
Thank you. Please introduce yourself, and you have five minutes.
Thank you. Madam President and the council members, Mayor Norton. I'm Father Jerry Mann, I'm the pastor of the Cool Cathedral of St. John the Evangelist, and in the neighborhood of the Mayo Medical Community, and we have a wonderful history with the Franciscan Sisters, as well as Mayo. We were, our parish was begun in 1863, Mayo in 1864, so we've been around together for a long time. I'm also a graduate of Lourdes High School, and it's a long time ago. The Board of Trustees of the Rochester Catholic Schools have met monthly, and most recently, there are the six pastors of the six Catholic parishes in the city and six laypeople on the Board of Trustees. And we have passed a resolution supporting the Mayo Clinic's plan for the demolition of the former high school of Lourdes and the construction of a Mayo logistic building supporting long-term growth while meeting the needs of staff and patients for years to come. We were very grateful in 2013, when the Mayo Medical Community purchased a Lourdes High School, because we were relocating and we really needed their support and that funding. And we presumed that the former Lourdes High School, that there would be a demolition, was always our presumption. It's interesting about Mother Alfred, she was a very bold, assertive, intelligent woman, and over the years, she was always for moving to a future full of hope. And so with the, we had St. John's High School was on our block, and that was raised for the new Lourdes High School. And the same with the Mother House, which was located east of the former Lourdes building, and that was raised when Assisi Heights was created. So there has been a history of looking to the future and the promise of what the future brings. So we have really, with all that historicity, we have been very supportive of taking another step, and it's why we would support the Mayo Medical Community. The Rochester Catholic School Board of Trustees recognize that over the course of time, the partnership, which I mentioned with the Franciscans and with Mayo, that we have been good neighbors, and we continue to be very good neighbors with the Mayo Medical Community. There are volumes of documents that point to the relationship, and with the building being vacant for 10 years, and of course, concerns about that time, but the presumption was it would be razed eventually. So our support for Mayo, for the demolition is 100%, and we just honor all of what the Mayo Medical Community is in our neighborhood and in our relationship. Every day, we welcome people from Mayo. Every day, we meet patients, employees, we have people moving through our space consistently. So in that sense, when there's this kind of progress and new possibilities as the logistics building, we give it our full support as a parish community and as the Rochester Catholic School Board of Trustees. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others who would like to speak on item G6? Last call. All right, I will close the public hearing and invite the Mayo team back up, and you have five minutes for an initial rebuttal, although council may have additional questions.
Thank you for this opportunity to come back before you. Many have asked about the 2019 work that was done. In 2019, Mayo Clinic did support the former high school building being placed in the inventory for a future decision on landmark designation. The work in 2019 was not related to designation status, but more so to create the list, the inventory that we are discussing this evening. After further study, we believe the structure does not- After further study, are, we believe the structure does not meet the high level of significance to be deemed a local landmark, and that the designation study that was part of this findings was not completed until 2023. We believe the former Lourdes High School does not meet the high level of significance to qualify for local landmark designation. The determination of eligibility report concluded the building does not meet seven of the eight criteria to be deemed historic. The study only cited a narrow and limited significance to, to the 1941 portion of the building related to parochial education and concluded it does not represent significant architectural innovation. In addition, the Catholic Diocese of Winona Rochester did not request historic preservation status at any time. However, we recognize the importance of this site to members of our community and are committed to honoring its history as part of the redevelopment.
Thank you, Madam President, Mayor Norton, council members. One question came up, why doesn't Mayo build a, Mayo Clinic build on the site just north of the former lourds? Like to point out, the former Lourdes site is 340 feet closer to our planned new clinical buildings in the block to the north. Extra time traveled, multiple trips per day, multiplied over years and years as great inefficiency and loss for our staff and patients. Additionally, moving the site further would impact underground infrastructure, including electrical, sewer, and other utilities.
All right, well, we will open it up for questions, if you wouldn't mind staying up here. Thank you all, and thank you to all who spoke. Where do we want to start with questions? If there are any, otherwise, Councilmember Dennis?
Okay, so yeah, I have a few questions. I often don't prepare anything, I always want to listen and hear and make a very open view to make a decision. But my question about this pocket park, is there a guarantee that is going to occur? Like, is it going to be in writing, that it's going to absolute, not, not just for the record, you know, like we can, because records can, you know, we go through time and can't remember the exact dates and everything of all the council meetings. What is going to be in writing to guarantee that those historical artifacts are incorporated and that park is going to be made?
Councilperson Dennis, I'll answer one way. Mayo Clinic is here publicly stating we're going to do a pocket park to the west of the facility. We are going to do a pocket park to the west of the facility, including artifacts that will honor the site. It is part of the scope of our project, we are in front of you tonight with that scope.
Is that in the design, I guess I don't have that in front of me right now, but you had that beautiful shiny, the pocket park was already incorporated. So when was this pocket park incorporated into design? Was it originally, wasn't, wasn't just, okay?
Yes, the pocket park was always going to be green space buffering the Kotsky Park neighborhood. And we thought this would also be an excellent place to display the artifacts from the former Lourdes site, so it can be outside for all to see versus being just encapsulated inside the building.
Thank you. Councilmember Keen?
Oh yeah, I invited our presenters to sit down, we've gone through our stuff, and I'd like to make a motion.
Thank you.
I would move to remove the Lourdes High, Lourdes High School from the historic inventory.
I'll second that.
Okay, Councilmember Keen, you have the floor.
Thank you. I tried to list a set of facts here that come to me as far as listening to the public hearing, but also doing my study coming into this, but I realize now there, my set of facts are public, are peppered with my opinions too and judgment, and that's just the way it is. I'll start out by acknowledging, I think there is a community value in part of the 1941 building. And I think there is this, like when you look at schools, they play a special part, and look at parochial education, it is important, and we need to find some way to save that. I also acknowledge that the state offices have, have been consulted, and they'll come back to us and agree that there are grounds for local consideration, and we should be looking at this as a possibility. Those are facts in support of designation. But I also look at, the past owner has come in front of us and said they could not find a way to use this building, and it was not economically viable for what they were doing. We've got the current owner coming in front of us and saying the building fails to, to be able to suit what they wanted to do, it fails to be able to move forward. We have the construction companies coming and saying like, this just doesn't work for what we want to do. Again, the state offices have recommended that we look at this. But, I mean, I have a short history here of this, this same historic preservation group telling us to ignore those recommendations when they say not to do something. So it's hard for me to say those carry a lot of weight when they come back and say that, when they're in agreement, and now they're the most important thing. So that, that's, doesn't carry that much weight. As far as an opinion, the determination of the report to preserve Lourdes High School is fairly narrow and limited. It doesn't meet the threshold of saying like, this, this is the, you know, like some of the other buildings intact, integrity, historic integrity, economic viability going forward. Here's the other thing, Councilmember Dennis tried to follow up, the current owners have acknowledged the value in part of the building, and they've made these public commitments to try to capture that and save it for our community. And this is different than just having a building that they said that's how it always was. This is a part of historic preservation to point to something and says, let me tell you about what it was, and let me tell you what was here and why that's valuable. And I find that missing in our, in our view of historic preservation, and I'd like to see more of that. Our staff as advisor, and advisory boards have applied the criteria. They've gone through this work of saying like, what is historic, what's not, what about the 1958 parts? And they've found criteria that admits, that it matches and brings that to us. But they also bring us this process where we're supposed to look at historic significance, historic integrity, and economic viability, all as parts that we need to take into account as we, as we take action on these things. We've heard from past owners and current owners, the preservation is not economically viable. You know, the other thing, when I come here, I come here and I know the Mayo reps are going to stand up, and I know the staff is, and I know the historic preservation. But this is powerful seeing labor here, to see the carpenters' union, to see the electricians speaking up, to see the pipe fitters in the back of the room. That sort of brings into context what's happening here too, and what's, what we need to move forward with respect for the past, but with a vision to the future. Lastly, you know, this is one of the early conflict points we're going to have with Bold Forward Unbound. I know there's things going on that I'm going to have trouble supporting, and I know there's going to be some disappointments from, for me, and there's going to be, I think, some disappointments for Mayo. But as we get started on this, and one of these first things coming to council, I'd like to see us come out of here with a way to move forward and, and sort of a better, a good working relations to start with, because we're going to have some things to fight through. And I want to have some wins, and I, I want this for our community, but I also want Mayo to think about more than patients and who comes into their hospital. They have to think about what they're doing to the people who live here, who don't go into the clinic. People who walk by there every day, or people who like live downtown, and they don't want a warehouse down the street, they want you guys to worry about making it something that's urban appeal. And I worry sometimes Mayo, in all their speeches, they're talking about patients and getting stuff there efficiently. And I want you to worry about that, but worry about the rest of us too. We're not all in the Mayo buildings, we're not all here for healthcare. We live here, and we want you to respect that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Keen. Councilmember Bransford?
Mr. Keen said most of, most everything that I think I could say. What I would make an appeal to Mayo in the pocket park is to preserve as much as possible. Really make that something that when, as Mr. Keen says, we're not all in the Mayo buildings, but when we walk by that, we go, wow. You know, we really do see what it used to look, you know, what this building used to look like. And so for me, the saving grace on this is the pocket park, and at least some homage to what Lourdes is, and, you know, we really need to pay homage to that. And so I'm appreciative of the park, but my ask is, do as much as you can to make that a very, very amazing place for patients and citizens to go to and to remember. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Bransford, and Councilmember Wall?
I'm going to amend the motion by adding these words and recognize Mayo Clinic's commitment to construct the 30-foot linear park with features honoring the site as the former location of Lourdes School.
Second.
Okay, Councilmember Wall, you have the floor.
I think that the three speakers ahead of me have already lifted up the important idea of, of saving as much as we can, as Mr. Bransford said. And this just puts it in the document that we cannot forget this, this is important.
All right, any discussion on that item in particular, Councilmember Dennis?
I will vote for it because I'd like to have things in writing.
Thank you. Let's go ahead and vote for the amendment, and then we will back, get back to the original motion, all right? All in favor of the amendment to recognize the commitment to construct the park, in short? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries, all right, back to the original. Councilmember Wall, did you have anything else?
No.
All right, Councilmember Palmer?
Thank you. I was lucky enough to be in the building about three years ago, and it's not the same building as I remember from prior. But one of the things I learned at, probably at Lourdes, was, is that a church is not a building, it's the people. And I think that that's what people remember is, is what they did there. I think that we sometimes forget all the good things that the Mayo Foundation has done. And, you know, I've been in the Foundation House, and that's a beautiful site, and they've spent a lot of time fixing that and keeping that up. The Mitchell Center, I was in that about five, yeah, about eight years ago now. And went down the stairway, and I remembered being there as a librarian, what a beautiful building, and how they preserved that. I was lucky enough to be in the Plumber Building when they took out five ceilings and, and had the cornices, and, and how much work they put in to keep that building as, as nice as I can ever remember it being. You know, I worked at Mailwood, and, and the investment that they put in at Mailwood is incredible. As far as I can remember, back to 1968, they tried to save Mailwood from sliding down the hill, but Mayo, Mayo Clinic did it. They preserved it, and they spent a lot of time and money that no one's ever asked them about. You know, they've got Assisi Heights, and if you've been up to Assisi Heights, an absolutely gorgeous building. And, and they've spent a lot of time and money to save that building. And so, you know, for me, you know, a school is the people, it's not the building. And I, and I support the Mayo Clinic's vision, and I think that we're lucky to have the vision and, and that what they've done for our community is saving some of these wonderful sites.
Thank you, Councilmember Palmer, Councilmember Dennis?
All right, thank you. So I just said I, I, I don't come with a preconceived vote, but I did talk to a lot of people in my neck of Rochester, because that's who I represent, who elected me. And overwhelmingly, people in Word Six love lourds. And so I take that into huge consideration as well. But I do want to say I'm very, have a high empathy, if we look at our, you know, our, our, whatever, the studies that we've done about our council. And so I do see with Mayo how frustrating it is, you know, anyone who owns property not being able to do what you want with your property. And, you know, we need to set criteria, we can't just landmark everything. We need to not set presidencies that we can't follow up with. But I really feel like we want to define what wealth is and what is wealth in a community, a wealth is, I think, stories, I think wealth is memories. I, when I think of, when you hear the, what makes a house a home, well, what makes a house a home to me is it retains history. And so we need to keep that history in our, our city as, as we get shinier and bigger and fancier. Like was said, once it's gone, it's gone, and it, and, and, you know, money has a lot of power, and I know people want to see what's best for the Rochester future. But I know with my life, plans change, we have to change our plans sometimes. And I hear Mayo has a good plan, but plans can change. You can't bring back a building. And what I look at in my allegiance is, as a school teacher, someone who works with kids all the time, is for my kids, my grandkids, they don't have a voice, I mean, I don't have grandkids, but I mean, my great-grandkids, who they need a voice, and I want to be their voice. And I think it's a fact, lourds meets the criteria. It's a fact that there is evidence backing it being preserved. And I feel very strongly, we need to honor the people, the committees, the, the, those who have done the groundwork to talk about the 1941 section being, prioritizing it being saved. And so my, I just urge my colleagues to, to think of great-grandchildren of all the people in Rochester, and, and not just the bottom line of, of an organization, but, but what really is important to our community. And I hope people will vote against this motion to take it off the preservation list. And I just want to end with, people often want to ask me what my, my, well, not just, I mean, what my values are, and of course, my values are very similar probably to Mayo Clinic's values, to my colleagues' values. My values are integrity, honesty. But the difference is, what we have to look at our allegiances, and, and you, you can list your allegiances, you know, the chamber has allegiance, you know, we all have allegiances. But I do want to ask my colleagues to think about their past, what they do right now, their present, perhaps, income, and their future, what you want to do in the future, and make sure those things, what you're doing right now to make your livelihood, what you're doing in the future is not shadowing this vote, because conflict of interest is a real serious thing, transparency is trust. And I want to make sure that when we vote, we vote for what's best for our community, not what's best for our employer, not what's best for our future consulting firms or whatever we do. I really feel we need to recuse ourselves if you have any conflict of interest in this vote at all. Thank you.
At first, I thought my comments would be a nice segue to what you were saying, but I am not going to agree with your last insinuations there, but I will say that when I think about the history of the community and my history, and so many in our history, it is deeply embedded with Mayo and the hope and the advancements in medicine that it provides. My history and so many people in my spaces were not necessarily welcome into Lourdes High School as part of our story. So it's, you know, everybody brings really special sentiments and thoughts and, and meaningful stories that I absolutely appreciate and welcome. But, but history can be recognized in many ways, it does not have to be physical spaces. It can be through stories and sentiments and museums and parks that honor those spaces. So it's just, it's a really hard one, it's hard to sit here and listen to really beautiful stories of people and what that space means to them and what the style means to them. I do believe that it is a historically significant building based on the criteria and the experts that have reviewed it, it's just that when we're faced with making a decision about the future of our community, we have to look at the whole of the story. And for me, the whole of the story is in order to advance our shared goals of increasing our economic stability and workforce goals and providing a really wonderful place to live, that sometimes requires us to make hard decisions and look at things like, is it a viable space? The word hardship is really difficult, but is it economically viable to use that space in a way that's going to advance our goals? And I just hear that it isn't for a number of reasons that Mayo has stated. So it's a tough one, I hate to let people down, but I think that we're moving in a great direction with Bold Forward Unbound, and I would like to support removing it from the list. Another discussion, Councilmember Kirkpatrick, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm going to turn my microphone on. Thank you. I'm going to go to the questions part, I don't remember hearing any questions being asked. So I'm going to back up a little bit and ask some questions. The staff to Mayo?
Well, nobody indicated they had questions for Mayo, so we allowed them to sit down and not respond.
Well, I did, but I don't think you saw my hand, and we went right into a motion, so I need to back up to do that. All right, so, thank you.
But we need a motion to suspend the rules, if you'd like to ask Mayo a question.
I move to suspend the rules. Second, your discussion.
All right, Councilmember Dennis?
Oh, everyone has the right, I believe, to have their questions answered and be an informed decision maker when voting on such an important issue.
Other discussion? Councilmember Keane?
So just to clarify, the suspend the rules to, we're gonna let Councilmember Kirkpatrick ask, I'm gonna say it, three questions and then we're gonna go back and do our regular rules. What am I voting on here?
I just have some questions that I was listing when folks were giving their stories, when Mayo made their presentation. And then, yeah.
I understand. I just, we're voting on allowing, Council, I'm trying to scope this.
Voting on me asking questions because I didn't get to it.
Three questions? Help me scope this and that so we don't go off in the five.
Yep, I have one, two, three, four, five, six questions, but I think I can cross two of them off when I take the time to look at them.
So, and with that explanation, I'll support the motion.
All right. All in favor of the motion to suspend the rules for Councilmember Kirkpatrick to ask her outstanding questions about five to Mayo Clinic leadership? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
All right, motion carries. Go ahead, Councilmember Kirkpatrick.
I also have some questions for staff within here. It's not just Mayo. Okay, thank you. And I appreciated your double entendre of outstanding questions. Thank you for that. I appreciated the comment about 340 feet being significant. I originally trained in production manufacturing and wow. You can make a big difference doing something 10,000 times that only takes 16 seconds. It's, it's a huge amount of time. It's over 16 hours. So I get that and I can appreciate that. However, the suggestion of usurping the right-of-way in the road between Sixth and Seventh Avenue, that would be First Street Northwest, is that even a viable option? What's underneath there? Can that area be used? Has, has that been looked at? It was a suggestion that was brought up a couple, a couple of times this evening, but is it something we just throw right out?
Expanding into the right-of-way?
Using that underneath side. We're talking about a 30-foot linear park. And as I was listening to all of this, I wondered if perhaps that 30-foot linear park might become a 45-foot linear park on the south side of the block instead. And you do a deconstruction which would be economically viable because you don't need to utilize electricity, you don't need to utilize lighting, you don't need to utilize plumbing, but the facade remains. And the west side of the 1941 property is at ground level. So it's, it's shifting the way we're thinking about this in a bold forward and unbound way. We've simply seen one rendering of something that's not going to come to fruition for perhaps 10 years. So let's actually think outside of the box here a little bit, and these are what my questions pertain to before we sort of went down the discussion of what is right now. And I know what is right now is going to change. It is not going to end up with what we have because that is the design, manufacturing, production process. So is it even a viable option to usurp that space underneath First Street Northwest between Sixth and Seventh Avenue to, to meet that efficiency standard of maybe not being 340 feet away, but maybe 220 feet away?
Thank you for the question, Councilmember Kirkpatrick, Mayor, members of the council. We have not studied it, but what I can tell you is there's a lot of infrastructure in the streets around, well, throughout all of downtown, but particularly in the streets around this space. So it's likely that we would encounter a lot of utilities that would have to be relocated, significant utilities. But we have not studied it to the, to your question. We have not studied it. We just are aware there's lots of underground infrastructure that could impact it.
Okay, thank you. I'm assuming that in the demolition process, things have been specked out for where the waste is gonna go. What, what is gonna become of all of the blocks from the building? Has that, has that been discussed yet? Can the mortar be removed from them and those blocks can be reused? I'm thinking about the sustainability in all of this and, you know, our Kalmer landfill just keep getting fuller and fuller and fuller. And if you, if you sort of switch from a western park to a southern park and you utilize most of that facade for the park, for that historical interpretive education that's necessary to highlight the stories and to honor the work of Mayo, is, is that a viable option? So I guess the one question for Mayo has to do with Slide Seven in your presentation. Yes, clearly that eastern edge, which maybe was the gymnasium of the 1941 building, I can't remember. It's where you've got like a garden-level window. Is the western part of that building at ground level? Is that, is that portion usable? Maybe we don't save all of the 1941 facade, we just save the western end of it and it becomes an outdoor space that's utilized without a roof? Something creative like that? So my question is, is that western portion of the 1941 building at ground level? Any one of you could stand up and answer?
I guess I could. What I recall from the presentation is that what they were saying is that retaining that does not fit the footprint that's necessary for a logistics facility, but I would let Mayo Clinic clarify that again.
I do not recall for sure if it's right at ground level, but as Ms. Zelm said, the footprint required is over and above what the existing footprint is. We need the square footage of the, of the block as we laid out. Should also point out that during the design of the building, we're looking at two levels below grade, two levels above grade. So trying to make that match into any kind of existing facility is not possible.
Right, so full demolition, two stories below would be necessary for your structure. Got it? I understand. Okay, so that's where the 340 feet is really critical. Utilizing a surface lot that has basically no infrastructure underneath it really compromises the efficiency of what you're trying to do.
Correct, yes, thank you.
I like, I like a little more elaborate explanations. Thanks for that. Well, geez, Mr. Keane, I think you only got maybe two or three questions out of me. Yeah, I guess, I guess in essence, I don't support tearing the building down fully. I, I believe that what Mayo does is excellent in all regards. The capacity for good and doing things the right way is paramount. And that's what I appreciate about Mayo. Growing up, going to Mayo and then moving to Dallas, Texas in college and experiencing a medical system that I was completely foreign to, that you had to pay for first before you could be seen by the doctor. Yeah, patients come first, but I'm also going to back up what Mr. Keane said. And I've, I've said this to a couple of you. I appreciate everything that is being done and everything that you have done and what you will do in the future. But we have a community that's here and it's this community that's helped you build your empire. And we are not to be forgotten about. Our stories, the stories that we have as our city's grown up, as our city has seen one industry move from another industry to yet again, another industry. Starting out as a small ag town, a mining town, a grinding town for wheat, and then moving into IT with the I've Been Moved facility. I've never heard that before. It was very funny. And now medical and medical tech. So I don't support the building being torn down, but I absolutely love the concept that Mr. Masterpole has come up with. And if, if any more portions of the building could be saved and highlighted in a creative way or simply attaching other pieces of what's going to be built to the original facade, I would honor that. And I know the creativity that is available with the funding that you have. And I think reaching for something more broad, reaching for something that is even above and beyond what you're striving for right now would possibly hit my mark and my expectations because I know you can. I know you can do it and I know you will succeed at it. So that's, that's really all I have to say, but I, I can't, I can't support tearing, tearing the building down. I think I need to know more on that. And for right now, I'm gonna support the historic preservation until, until something else is proven that it doesn't need to be. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Kirkpatrick. Mayor Norton?
It almost feels not right to say anything, but I think I should weigh in on where I'm sitting with this. But I really appreciate so many of the comments you have made. And I think there've been, you know, this is a very difficult evening. We've listened to wonderful testimony and, and feelings shared on, on both sides of this, this issue. And I think we're all struggling with that, trying to decide how do we honor our past? And I appreciate the park concept. I think that will, that will help. But how do we prepare our community for the future and do so in a, in a way that's good for our community? And I think that's what you've heard here. And I know you've been listening for some time here. I say this to the Mayo folks in the room. So do everything you can to honor what you heard tonight. And I, I think for me, the thing for my colleagues here, I will have to sign the document, the decision that you make. And should you choose to remove this from the list and allow them to move ahead with demolition, I will be supportive of that for a whole number of reasons. But I think the argument on economic sense, listening to Father Mann and some of the other speakers who said, you know, had this been a building, we could have preserved and would have made sense, we would have done so because the love for this building is clear, you know, from all the speakers. But it couldn't. And if Mayo Clinic had been able to leave that building there and build around it somehow and meet the needs of their Bold Forward Unbound, they would have done that. But again, the economic viability doesn't make sense for that building here. So for those reasons, and not the emotional ones that I think so many of us feel, I do think we probably should move ahead with removing this from the landmark, its landmark status and allowing the, the future of Rochester to blossom because that's where we are, we are in this community. And I'm just, one more time, I'm gonna, you know, ask Mayo to do your very best to honor what you've heard here and the people in this community as you move ahead.
All right, well, let's go ahead and vote. So the, the motion is to remove the Lord's High School from the potential, what is the actual list called?
Historic Inventory.
Historic Inventory. And to, that is amended with the commitment to construct the park per Councilmember Wall's amendment. Everybody clear on what we're voting on? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Okay, motion carries five to two. So thank you, everyone, for being here and sharing your stories. It really meant a lot. And we will take a 10-minute break.
Recording stopped.
Recording stopped.
All right.
Recording in progress.
We are narrowed down to the trustee of you all. So thank you for staying here. We will move on to reports and recommendations. And these are just the pulled items from our consent agenda. So the first item is, was F-17, the contribution agreement with Mayo Clinic pulled by Councilmember Dennis. Go ahead, Councilmember Dennis with an explanation. We have Erin Luxteine or Andy Torrey here to answer questions.
Well, thank you for staying late and thank you. I pulled these items after conversations I've had where some of the questions I haven't been able to get answered. So I am pulling them so that I can get them answered here, which is not my preference to do. My preference would be to do this elsewhere. But my question for this particular F-17 is why did it, I mean, I, when I went through all the, the things that Mayo Clinic is going to be paying for, what, half of it's, to my understanding, Mayo and then half of it's the city. I just want to have clarification about why the funding was divided 50/50 like that? Why isn't Mayo paying more? Why isn't the city paying more? I just had that clarification, that's why I pulled this, thank you.
Councilmember Dennis, councilmembers and mayor. Yes, so basically, they were, that Mayo was part of an agreement that they would pay for 50% of that street when we put that in and the parts of that street. We, that was part of a larger stormwater project and the street was part of that. They either could have done it themselves and just done kind of their part of it, or we could, they could wait until we were going to get in there and we would do it jointly. And we would, the city would actually pay 25%. And then there's another, Lightson, I believe is there, and they'll be paying another 25%. So it's basically, it's their part of what their responsibility is for that, for that part of their, you know, for basically what they have to pay for their part. Just like, so, so that, so it's an agreement. It was an agreement that was made earlier. And this was a, we decided to make it a city project because it was an opportunity to kind of do it the right way.
Thank you. That was my question. All right, thank you so much.
I'd like to make a motion to authorize a contribution agreement with Mayo Clinic for one half of the documented design and construction costs.
Second.
Councilmember Keane, now the floor.
And add.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. All right, moving on to what was F-18, now H-2, Diversity Equity Inclusion Professional Development Contracts with Good Enough Consulting, pulled by Councilmember Dennis. And do we have Ms. Motella here?
I believe she's online, but they're, depending on the questions, we could probably handle them here. We try not to keep people late when we don't have questions ahead of time.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Dennis.
Yep, I agree. I think it's important to not keep people late and it's also important to have all questions answered. DEI, Diversity Equity Inclusion is incredibly important. It's one of the priorities of the city. And I just, what I've asked before with other projects is, we're, looks like in this particular, and where's my paper? Right here. We are using a consulting firm. So I just wanted to ask questions about competitive bidding of this firm, consulting firm. And then why, if we have already staff who are specialized or we, who are designated to work with diversity, equity, inclusion, why are we not doing this in-house? And instead spending the $96,000 for this, this consultant to come in? That was my, one of my main questions. Thank you. I guess I can start off. I don't see Ms. Motella.
She is available. Ms. Motella, would you like to start or would you like administration to?
You can begin, Allison. I'm sorry, I was having trouble with my button here. Are you able to hear me okay?
We are, yes.
Okay, thank you for your question, Councilmember Dennis. I think to the first part of your question, yeah, certainly equity work is really important. It does support some of the foundational principles that you set ahead of quality services as well as a foundational principle of social equity. And I will note, you know, from the inception of our city, many, many years ago, this is the first time they've had a role similar to mine. And in that initial audit in 2021, we talked about the initial scope of work, which has scoped out five years. So it's an insurmountable of work, amount of work in a really short period of time. And so this work that a consultant is doing, both in the professional development space as well as in the equity audits, is a supplement to the work that I'm doing. And in addition, so it's an additional resource. It doesn't negate the volume of work that I have in my scope and in the work that I'm doing, but it adds value. And particularly in the space where we're having an audit, having somebody who is external, who has done audits with other organizations in different spaces, brings in really diverse experience from the audits that they've offered in other spaces. They're also able to bring best industry standards based on the equity audit. So they're doing different places, those practices. But also it allows us to pace our work much faster than I would be able to do on my own if I was to audit every department. Our organization is incredibly large. We do very, very diverse work. And so, I mean, certainly I could audit, but that might take us 10, 20 years to get to the space that we might be able to get to in five years, which was the hope when I first scoped this work. So I hope that answers your question, to note that it's a supplement to the work and not diverging it to a consultant altogether.
Thank you. No, I am incredibly impressed by your work. And I know that with the broad scope of what diversity, equity, inclusion entails, that, you know, it's very important to, to get outside thoughts. But to go to the, the audit, I agree. I think every department in every place in our city should be audited. So I'm a, I'm a big fan of outside audits that have no financial ties to, to our, to our city, doing that work. But my question is like with competitive bidding, to make sure that this consultant or other, you know, people who are, you know, doing this work, that it's the best financial investment for, you know, we're good stewards of taxpayer dollars. And then also work with diversity, equity, inclusion. There's so many, like I went to a lot of trainings and I'm sure, I hope all of my colleagues have gone to several trainings. There's so many different ways of training. So if I'm getting this correctly with, we, do we pick the consultant based on?
Should we put a motion on the floor? Or we just, I want to get, do you want to, can I put a motion on the floor?
Oh, please, yes, yeah.
I move approval of the two contracts for the diversity, equity, inclusion with, with the selected contractor.
Second.
All right, Councilmember Keane gets the floor back, but I'll hand it back to you.
Yeah, again, I don't mind if there's a question, but we just seem to be talking and not asking a question and not having it answered and moving ahead with our business. So I'm trying to move us along, put a motion on the table and then we ask our questions and then we move along.
Okay, well, thank you. My, my question, and I know sometimes I do, you know, jump around a little bit because that's how my, my brain processes neurodivergently. But I do appreciate focusing on, my question is for competitive bidding, are we getting, you know, using taxpayer dollars in the most efficient way possible? And are we looking at all the ranges? And how are we picking which consultant is doing this work? Because there are so many varieties of ways of, of teaching and connecting to this important subject. The council president, Councilmember Dennis, this is a professional service. So that's different than competitive bidding. We go and look for the professional service that would align with the goals. So when this started, I believe, two years ago, two and a half years ago, there was a thorough process looking at what the necessity would be for the city to go through and have as many teammates as possible through the same training so that there would be consistency. So there was an initial process. It was not competitive bidding because this isn't a construction project or a deliverable. It is a professional service. So we meet the requirements there by getting quotes and clarity from different vendors that provide similar types of services, but they are generally quite unique in this space. And we also have a discount because we've continued working with this group. And there's also the intangible value of having them come to us so that our cohorts don't have to travel and miss any work. And just the value of being able to have the same consultant, both experience our teammates and understand the questions that are getting asked as they then also inform the Jedi audits that happen within the departments. So there's direct value. The purchasing is followed through quote process that is for a professional service, which is not competitive bidding. I appreciate that. I'm sure this consulting group is wonderful. I have the full faith that they have been chosen for reasons that are great. I'm just saying, if we don't look at every single purchase through the lens of can we do better for the taxpayers, then we can't, you know, find funding for things like. We do look at all of the purchases in that way. Okay, that's what I was asking. Could be better. If this was competitive bidding and looked at purchase price, thank you.
Thanks.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. All right, Councilmember Dennis, you pulled F-19, contract with Lime for shared bike and scooters. Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. And I saw that there is a huge list of questions. I'm not sure how colleagues were asking these questions or how they got. But I received them via email. That's how I generally receive all of the questions from council. So just to clarify that. Okay, thank you. I'm more of a verbal processor myself. But this is, there's some answers, but I think this is such a huge issue to a lot of people I talk to, people who sees it perhaps the Lime scooters as perhaps safety issues with, with different things. And so I would just like some of the stuff that's listed out that we have access to, but the residents do not have access to, to be explained a little bit on why we are going for this whole five-year contract? Why, you know, like just some of these questions that were, which, the one I had was about enforcement. And I see that listed here. If you could just go through for all the residents who've had concerns and why we are doing this contract the way we are.
So I will turn it over to Deputy Administrator Steinhauser, also recognizing that Matthew C. is on for additional specific questions. Go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Council President Carlson, members of the council. So the question related to why a five-year contract? We've been operating in a pilot scenario for the past two contract terms. That's why they were shorter terms. They were two-year terms. And as we have been evaluating the program, it's really becoming operationalized. So we felt a longer-term contract would be appropriate and it would also allow us to move to the next phase of this work with them in terms of incorporating other things to help better improve management of the system like corral boxes, geocoding it so we can better track where the scooters are being parked, control where there can be left or not left. So a five-year contract allows the company to make more of an investment in those spaces, which is something that we want to do in terms of this partnership. We also had, continue, the contract does include a 30-day out clause if for whatever reason we determine it's no longer a viable option for us to continue to operate the scooter program. There is a question around, I believe you mentioned something around accidents. We did provide some information. The police department was that, in terms of enforcement, is that according to police reports, the largest percentage of the enforcement or accidents involving scooters are actually private scooters and predominantly outside of the downtown area. That said, we are working with Lime scooters and that's something that we want to get in terms of a measurement for the future contract is that we'll monitor accident reports. We'll have to work with the police department so that when, we know when it's a Lime scooter as opposed to a private scooter. But with the data that we have right now, it's predominantly private scooters that are involved in the police reports. And I believe that is.
Enforcement is also listed there. And so we reserve the right to enforce through our police powers, but also require that there is a system in place for Lime to be able to do escalated enforcement by fining or restricting access to Lime, to the folks that, that are utilizing their service. And all of this was provided on Friday.
Thank you. We don't take audience questions, Mr. Kresel, unless you're just stretching. All right, so is, can we get a motion on the table?
I'll move to authorize a contract with shared bikes and scooters with Neutron Holdings doing business as Lime Bikes for 2024 to 2029.
All right, Councilmember Keane.
Yeah, I was not that pleased when I saw this come up for five years, but I do understand the logic that we are out of the S thing. I hope we get a little better control so that these things, when we talk about boxing and we talk about these capabilities, it seems like we talk about them more than we enforce them. But I guess that's true with a lot of our different things. I think there's a subset of our community that really loves these as entertainment and others that use them as true last mile transportation. And I think it's important that we try to support these kind of programs.
Councilmember Kirkpatrick.
Thank you. City Administrator Zels was really helpful when I asked numerous questions about this. I too, Mr. Keane, am hesitant about the five-year contract, but understanding that it shifts us from that role of a pilot program to a true contracted program where there's more accountability. We can, we can make more requests and step up our demands. I really enjoyed that. Also being told by Ms. Zels that we have a 30-day out, that that was very, very helpful to know that with 30-day notice. The other piece to this is that, you know, with two days, we can get those accident reports. And I did go ahead and request that in writing. Unfortunately, it's not here now, but it will come in the next couple of days. But the data is showing that it's generally private accidents versus these, these Lyft. It's not Lyft, it's not Uber, it's Lime. Lime scooters. The one request I do have of Lime, and I spoke with several riders about this last summer, I'm assuming it's the same models that are coming back this next year. The first pilot season, they were sort of a wimpy model. And then the second contract time, it came back as a beefy model. So I'm assuming we're getting the beefy model again?
I would have to defer to whether, both Matt and Josh are on the call if one of them.
Okay, all right. Well, assuming it's the beefy model, when you look down at this unit, most of it's close to ground level, it's difficult for you to see the no sidewalk riding stickers on those wimpy models. It was sort of right there on the neck of, the base of the neck of the scooter. But now with the beefier models, there's not really a good place to place that. So I am requesting that Lime produce a Lime-colored sticker with white writing on it that goes across that back fender. So when you look down on the unit, it's real obvious. It's on that back fender and it says no sidewalk riding, which is one of the protocol pieces of these scooters. They are not supposed to be on the sidewalks. In discussing with somebody else about the Lime, they did say that, you know, that screen comes up where it says no sidewalk riding, but I think people are swiping through the screen so quickly or they're not paying attention to those little pop-up windows. And maybe they're missing that. So just one more, one more acknowledgement, you know, to get off the sidewalk would be really awesome too with the sticker. So thanks. I'm excited about this program. It's so useful in so many ways. I like it. Thanks.
Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Moving on to what was F-20 and now is H-4, councilmember Wall pulled this item. Go ahead.
Thank you. I pulled this item for three reasons. One, the public is highly engaged with this issue and we want the public to know that we're actively in a process working towards saving the Silver Lake pool. We'll be given more information and dollar figures in the weeks ahead with the intent that we could possibly rebuild the pool after the 2024 summer swimming season is complete. Second is to thank the public for adding your considerable voice to the topic. This past Friday, I spoke to a third-grade class at Jefferson Elementary and I tried to pick topics that third graders would be interested in, including pools. So I led off with pools. 35 minutes later, a little girl raises her hand and says, "Did you get the email from my mom about the pool?" I asked the mom's name and I recognized the name and also recognized that I got one from her dad as well. And so I said, "Yes, I got those emails and I'd love you to go home and talk to your mom and dad about that, about the email that they got back from me." And I hope that now there's a little girl and family in Rochester who believes that their voice really makes a difference in making this a better place. And finally, number three, I want to thank the staff for pivoting so quickly on this issue and already working towards uncovering possibilities for moving together to improve our community. And I move to approve the four actions.
All right, councilmember Wall, anything else?
Nothing.
Councilmember Bransford.
I just wanted to say to Mike and Park and Rec staff and Mr. Widman, thank you for listening. Really, sometimes this is a difficult chair to be in and these dialogues can be difficult. But I really do appreciate the opportunity to have had that dialogue with you during the study session. And I really, really appreciate the fact that you listened and responded. So really, thank you very much.
Councilmember Dennis?
I just, for the record, of course, echo what my colleagues are saying. It's just so important, I've said a lot about the importance of pools for equity and about places of belonging, so many important things for people who are struggling right now with mental health, people who just need something to do. I'm a huge fan of pools on so many levels. So I want to thank also the staff, but the residents and people who've reached out, I was awe-inspired. They reached out to me in every way that I could be reached out to. I had Facebook messages, I got text messages, I got phone calls, I got emails. They came up to me in person. I mean, so I just want to say the passion for a community that comes together is awe-inspiring. So thank you to all those who reached out. Thank you.
All right, councilmember Kirkpatrick, wrap us up.
Thank you. Yeah, thanks, staff. That was one of my favorite study sessions. I felt like we really engaged in a lot of dialogue up here and we really shared what we needed to. And I'm just going to make another request, that apples-to-oranges comparison of Soldiers Field getting so many people and Silver Lake not getting many. And it's just pretty clear that a bunch of bare concrete doesn't have the draw of all those amenities that Soldiers Field had. So I hope we're not considering just a little lap pool at Silver Lake. I'd like to just have that 30-year-old Soldiers Field pool that just got ripped out just put over at Silver Lake because it would just be really awesome over there. So, thank you.
I'm guessing it's not still intact, but.
What I mean, you guys know what I mean. You know, use a 30-year-old design, plug in the equipment and yeah, it'd be great. We'd love it over there. Thanks.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Yeah, thank you. Okay, so I will shift it over to Mr. Spindler-Craig to do a first reading of one ordinance and then do a few second readings. Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam President. Councilmembers, Mayor Norton, there is one first reading, item J-1, "An Ordinance Creating and Enacting Chapter 12-11 of Title 12 of the Rochester Code of Ordinances Relating to the Regulation of Nonessential Water Usage Upon Declaration of a Critical Water Deficiency As Authorized by Minnesota Statute Section 103G.291, Subdivisions 1 and 2." Moving on to the second readings, item K-1, "An Ordinance Creating and Enacting Section 3.027 of the Home Rule Charter of the City of Rochester Relating to Office Holder Cannot Serve on Charter Commission."
Nothing to add.
All right, councilmember Kirkpatrick.
I just want to make a comment. Thank you. I just want to make a comment. Water is really critical and I really appreciate this reading coming forward. There's currently 65 surface water appropriation permits.
I think we're on a different item.
Yeah.
Did we? It was just the first reading. We don't speak to that one. We're on the charter commission. My timing is just not stellar this evening. Okay, well, you can say something in other business.
You'll get a chance in about a month, second reading.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. K-2.
Item K-2, "An Ordinance Creating and Enacting Chapter 8-15 of Title 8 of the Rochester Code of Ordinances Relating to the Establishment of Prohibited Camping on City Property and City Right-of-Way."
I will just take a moment, everybody. I should have said this ahead of time. So if there are questions of Mr. Spindler-Craig, we'll take those now. Otherwise, we will invite a motion. But everybody shouting out at once isn't going to help. So any questions of Mr. Spindler-Craig? Is there a motion?
Move to deny.
Okay.
Thank you.
Second to the discussion.
All right, councilmember Dennis, you have the floor.
Thank you. I, in all moral, I had to do everything I can to have this denied. I have expressed with passion, I have listened to so many stories, people who are struggling. We need to revisit this. We need to make sure that we are looking through the eyes of people who are going to be impacted by this incredibly, I believe, regressive policy that's going to do more harm than good. And I feel that we need to cast another vote. And if it does pass, I really encourage the mayor to this time speak up and veto. This is a policy that, after talking to so many people who are impacted by homelessness, talking to organizations who see the struggles daily, we cannot, I think in good conscience, add to these struggles by enforcing this policy or by passing this policy.
Councilmember Palmer. Councilmember Keen.
Yeah, I want to speak against the motion on the floor. I've had some discussions with social workers, professionals. They were really upset with us in the discussion we had about encampments. They lectured me about my simple views on linking people to services as if this council thought it was as simple as introducing people to programs. I think we, and I'll take it more personally, I think I seem to be unaware of the complexities of the encampments and things like antisocial behavior in the streets, addiction, mental illness, and also the violence of people experiencing homelessness against each other. Looking back, I think those observations are accurate. I think we kind of defended what we wanted to do as the solution and that was wrong. It is not the solution. But I still support the need for this ordinance. Our law enforcement agents have asked us for the tools they need to deal with the people who live in our streets. Some of those people who live in our streets are difficult to work with and they're a subset of the homeless. And at this point, I'm backing this ordinance because I trust the leadership of our law enforcement and I trust the officers that are in the street and the empathy they have for the people they're dealing with in the streets. I've heard really good stories and I think that training and the leadership has us in a right position to use these kind of tools wisely and not against our own population. Thanks.
Councilmember Bransford.
I'm going to channel my inner Nick Campion here a little bit. But at one point, sitting here, I tried to relitigate a second reading. I think it's inappropriate to do that and I would like Mr. Spindler-Craig to maybe speak up a little bit about what the second reading is and why we do it, if you could.
Thank you, councilmember Bransford, councilmembers, Mayor Norton. I don't actually have much to add to that. Mr. Bransford and I spoke about this briefly. As all of you experience and recognize, the second reading often is a procedural matter that's required by state statute as well as the charter. And yes, while it may be tempting to relitigate and share your views once again, your experience overall is that that may not be the most efficient way for you to do business. But you get to pick and choose, I guess, the times when you may do a deeper dive. And this may be one of those conversations you're getting there. Presumably, those of you who wish to reiterate some of your comments previously shared, that's fine. And at the end of the day, you need to take a vote and you need to approve a second reading by a majority and we move on.
I was going to suggest that we keep our comments concise since we have had multiple discussions about this, but then you all yelled motions at me, so I got distracted. But I do appreciate that, but there is not something in our rules that says you can't share your comments, so.
I didn't say that it was. I just wanted to state for the record.
We have.
Why do we do this?
Yes, we have had extensive discussion. Councilmember Kirkpatrick, or excuse me, councilmember Wall.
I speak against the motion. I've disagreed publicly and privately with those who deem this ordinance a criminalization of homelessness. I am among those who believe this ordinance will bring greater safety to all who live in Rochester, especially those without homes, and people will be served more effectively. I mean, we just had a death again a couple of weeks ago. If the ordinance is approved and turns out that it's used in a way feared by opponents, I will work to repeal the ordinance. But I have supreme confidence in our police force and their compassion.
Thank you. Councilmember Palmer.
Well, this started out as a 2012 resolution from the city council that said that they didn't want camping in the parks in our areas that we own. It's dedicated down to the fact that now we have to have an ordinance because we have people telling homeless people that they don't have to obey that because it's not law. People are handing out tents to people and it is not humane to hand out tents and tell them to sleep in a park. It is not humane to be in a location that does not have sanitary facilities. Are we trying to criminalize homelessness? No, we are not. We started this on June 12th. I've had people who reached out to me on Thursday telling me, "Oh geez, we just need more time." And when you ask them what we need to do, they have zero idea of what they want done. Our police chief and our police department have asked for this ordinance. I think it's a tool. I have extreme confidence that they will do it correctly and properly. And that is our job to make sure that it's done that way. It's an issue that we need to take to heart. They are our brothers and sisters, but they do need to get help and we do need to have that assistance. I've been out to the homeless camps. I've been there with the police department when they've gone and talked to the people. They do it in a very kind and gentle way. But I think that this ordinance is something that we need at this time and I will be voting against this current motion.
Councilmember Kirkpatrick.
Thank you. I think there's a lot of good points with this ordinance, but I also think there's a couple of bad ones. I think what bothers me the most is there's seeming discrepancies between, well, we might not do this, we'll use our discretion. And to me, that's a slippery slope for a policy that maybe has wishy-washy enforcement. And I know you guys get that for sure because that's what's been happening so often with the whole system, judicial, legislative and executive, when we talk about the criminal system, kind of referencing some of the decisions that judges make. And so I think we need something. I would very much like to have a few of the things taken out of this, but I know the time has passed for that. I trust you. I trust you to do the right thing. I have faith in you. But people need to want to get the help they need to get if they realize they need to get the help. And there is nothing anybody else can do about that. We're all our own human beings and we have no control over anybody else. We can't do it with policy, we can't do it with enforcement. And I'm hoping this system will work and we'll have some data to show that or we can amend it. But I'm very much looking forward to the meeting on Wednesday where we're all coming together. It's disappointing to read the title of the article that it says it's a very rare experience. That should not be. We should all be dialoguing a lot more often about what we're doing with our community. So I'm going to say nay again, but I appreciate all the work you're doing and I'm sorry that this issue is so encompassing that it's taken up most of the work that you do. And I thank you for all the work you're doing with your crew, Chief Franklin.
So I'll call the question to deny.
All right.
Do a roll call.
Sure. Clerk Geisler, thank you.
Councilmember Keen.
Nay.
Bransford.
Nay.
Wall.
Nay.
Kirkpatrick.
Aye.
Palmer.
Nay.
Dennis.
Aye.
Council President Carlson.
Aye.
The three ayes and four nays.
All right, motion fails.
I'll move approval of the ordinance.
Second.
All right, councilmember Keen.
Nothing further.
Any other discussion? Clerk Geisler, please call the roll.
Councilmember Keen.
Aye.
Bransford.
Aye.
Wall.
Aye.
Kirkpatrick.
Nay.
Palmer.
Aye.
Dennis.
Nay.
Council President Carlson.
Nay.
Four ayes and three nays.
Motion carries for three. Thank you. One more ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. Item K-3, "An Ordinance of the City of Rochester, Minnesota Repealing and Replacing Chapter 10-2 of the City Code Sales Tax."
Move approval.
Second.
Councilmember Keen. Councilmember Keen.
Nothing to add.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. All right, no tabled items. We do have other business. This is, I'd invite a motion to recess the council meeting for the meeting of the Rochester Economic Development Authority.
So moved. Second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. All right, the meeting is recessed. I will officially call to order the Rochester Economic Development Authority meeting for March 18th, 2024. We do have one item on our consent agenda. I'd invite a motion.
Second.
All right, Councilmember Keen. Any discussion? The approval of the minutes? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. All right, moving on to reports and recommendations. We have a second amendment to the Declaration of Restricted Covenants on the BRIC apartments, which Mr. Erickson has been so patiently waiting to hear. I will turn it over to Erickson. Waiting to hear about the BRIC?
Yeah, I'm waiting to hear.
Yeah, here we go. It's your item. You've been waiting all evening for. So, related to the BRIC apartments and affordability, Ms. Woodward? I will turn it over to you.
Yeah, I was going to say, Council President Carlson.
I said Mr. Erickson's been waiting, but Ms. Woodward will lead us through.
So before you, there was a development assistance agreement that was approved on April 5th, 2021, that included income restrictions. The developer is interested in applying for the 4D program through Minnesota Housing, which requires at least 20% of the total units have rent and income restrictions at or below 60% of AMI. So what the request before you is adding rent restrictions to those units. The 4D program only applies to those units that are at 60% or below, at or below 60% of AMI, which would be about 72 units in this project or about 40% of the units. And so that is what is being requested, is to make that amendment so that the application to Minnesota Housing can take place.
Okay, any questions for staff? Councilmember Keen?
I just want to understand, the 4D, as I understand it, needs a local sponsor. Are we being asked to be that local sponsor?
For Minnesota Housing, the request is that if these documents are placed against and identify the rent and the income, they can make that application to Minnesota Housing.
Okay, so this is us just adjusting our agreement with BRIC? We're not representing anything to the state?
That is correct. We're just adding rent restrictions for those units.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Motion?
I would move approval of adopting a resolution.
Councilmember Keen?
Yeah, again, I just, I don't have these deep knowledges, but I have been involved with some of these things and I'm glad our operation is between our local developer-owner. There are other ways where cities do these things to give small grants to developers, which allows them to get 4D. And I think I wouldn't feel like we were being honest with the state when we did that. So I'm glad the way this is happening.
Yeah, I'd just say thanks to staff. Thanks to Dirk, Mr. Erickson, for continuing to support affordable housing in our community. Tapping into state programs, smart way to go. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. All right, moving on to the Declaration of Restrictive Covenants related to the affordability of the developments by Belavita of Rochester LLC and Forte of Rochester II LLC. Ms. Woodward.
So the development assistance agreement between the city and SKW Land LLC was completed in March 2020. In November 2020, the development assistance agreement was amended and split into two separate agreements, which is why there are two separate items before you, since the construction was done in two phases. In total, there's 254 units. This would result in 104 units or 40% of the units being applied for Minnesota Housing as well, the 4D program. And this is adding the rent restrictions, since those units are already considered senior affordable housing.
Okay, any questions? A motion?
I'll make a two-part motion to adopt the resolution authorizing a declaration of restricted covenants on the multifamily rental housing known as Forte and adopting a resolution authorizing declaration of restricted covenants on the multifamily rental housing development known as Forte of Rochester II.
Second.
Councilmember Keen?
No, nothing to add.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. All right, no other business with that. I'd invite a motion to adjourn the meeting of the EDA. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Motion carries six to one with Councilmember Keen voting nay. I will now call back to order the meeting of the City Council and entertain a motion to adopt the findings of the EDA.
Second.
Councilmember Palmer. I actually don't know if there's discussion on adopting the findings, but all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. All right, now is there other business back in our regular agenda? Councilmember Dennis.
Thank you. So they're going through all the notes I took when residents were speaking in open comment. There is a lot of very important...
So point of order, I wanted to bring up quickly, in our council rules, we do, and my window closed, but there is a statement about how we really shouldn't, we should be discouraged from using time in other business to address single, individual, community members' concerns. So I'd ask you to keep that to a minimum because we've all voted to approve those rules in which it discourages us from doing so and using our time in such a way.
Okay, well, I guess I didn't interpret that in this way. And if we recall back, I wasn't allowed to speak on those rules before voting as well. So there is no input on my behalf. I do want to bring up Al Lund, who talked about an intercultural city initiative. And he brought up a lot of like points about making sure that we are truly living up to what we are advertising with the comprehensive community co-designing. And so those staff who are, were here and heard the concerns, this is not the first time these have been brought up. So I just wanted to see if there is any feedback on how we are making sure that, I don't have the right questions, but that the report is that what we're doing is advertising correctly, that we are truly an intercultural city prioritizing city, if that makes sense. I don't know. I know Mr. Lund has reached out to staff, so just would like to get an answer on the public record.
Council President, council members, we'll have to get back to you on that. But I would just note that the index includes European cities that are indexed and those include areas that are performed by, in America, the county or the school district. So we are unlikely to ever quite stack up in the same way because we're not a European city. However, those questions have been received and answered by Ms. Metall before for Mr. Lund and we will provide you an update for the City Council on what has occurred. We also have a number of partners that were participating at that time that are no longer participating.
And just quickly, I pulled the language. It's in 3.04, connecting residents with staff resources. Council members are encouraged to generally avoid addressing individual community members' issues during other business, section of regular business meetings. You have any other...
I won't continue on, but I do appreciate everyone who came and spoke in open comment. Just a couple things, I know some of the things that were brought up earlier. I want to give a shout out to entities that celebrate, you know, changes of season. The 125 Lives celebrated Pi Day, which was really neat, the first time I've been in a community that actually, as a science teacher, that was super neat. So I want to give a shout out to that organization. And then the Seed Library, I had a great time planting seeds and I know a lot of people have already started planting seeds in the...
Point of order, President, I'm not sure what's happening here. We're in other business and we're having an individual council member give a report about things that none of us are dealing with right now. So is this part of other business or is this just where it's a report from an individual?
Is not something that precludes her from using this time this way. Would just encourage you to use all of our time, including staff's time, well here. Councilmember Dennis.
Thank you.
Yes, I believe that policymakers, which are the seven of us, have the ability to speak just as the city administrator and the mayor has at the beginning of every meeting.
On the agenda for that, just to point that out, which is in your council rules of procedure.
And this is a specific item as well. Other business is additional business and that's what I have here. A few things that I did ask Mayor Norton to present a little bit about her experience. National League of Cities, it was a huge, huge conference this year. Not everyone was able to go for many reasons. And I definitely would have loved to go. So I would love to be able to access all this information, which I have tried and I have been unable to. So I do hope the agenda is, some of the financing stuff, I've reached out before asking for like how things are being used. For example, when taxpayers pay for...
Mayor, can you pass your materials down so we can give them to...
Trip or something. The, there, I just want some clarification on making sure that all benefits that are from going on that trip are used for government purposes.
So this question has been asked ad nauseam and I have clarified it ad nauseam. The city council, the city does not have credit cards. The city has purchasing cards. Purchasing cards do not have any points associated with them. We do not receive frequent flyer miles. That is not how the IRS records frequent flyer miles. That is also not how the airlines are providing frequent flyer miles that are about worth a penny a mile and they're getting less valuable because they actually are continuing to change their frequent flyer programs. So the city does not have any frequent flyer miles. We do not accrue any sort of credits on our purchasing cards, which are not credit cards that do not come with some of the programs that you continue to reference despite having this answered probably 20 times.
Thank you, Ms. Elms. We're moving on from this topic.
There has not been 20 times.
Twenty-five.
That's misinformation.
Move on.
And I would prefer a little more respect.
Next topic, please.
Some of the clarifications from the last meeting that made the newspaper, I reached out to Post Bulletin and they said that because they were said, they are published. Post Bulletin publishes, things are quoted.
Point of order, this is just not a time where you just carry your individual grievances. Councilmember Dennis.
I reached out for...
I'm not going to allow it. That's your first warning. You're about to make a comment about your...
How do I get answers if my emails and texts are not responded to? I just want to know that answer. When I reach out...
Some questions are not worth answering. Can we move on?
And I would appreciate you stop having false accusations against people that slander them. Please stop, President Carlson. Thank you. And I'm speaking for saying that I spread misinformation, but not saying misinformation it is. Please do not spread unfounded allegations. Thank you.
Did you, did you just...
All right.
Okay.
I guess she's done time to adjourn.
Yep. Anytime, team. Motion to adjourn.
I'll move to adjourn.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. We're adjourned.